I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors Wednesday, May 18th, 2016 at 6:30 PM. If you would all please silence your cellphones, turn them off, silence them. If you have to make a phone call or receive a phone call, please step outside to do so. Directors also. If you'd all stand with me right now, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Georgiana, if I can get a roll call, please.
Director Klayman?
Here.
Vice President Ray Duncan?
Here.
Director acceptable on?
Here.
Director Cliff Jacobson?
Here.
Director Kellogg?
Ready and waiting.
Thank you, Georgiana. Right now, we'll do the approval of the consent calendar, item number two. Ready to hear a motion? Someone wants something?
I move we approve the consent calendar as corrected through memo on Georgiana from the minutes.
The minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there anybody that wanted to discuss any of the items on there? The only thing I thought I saw was the change in the minutes. Bill, Cliff, anything on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent calendar as amended in the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to something that's not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we're going to move forward. Approval of the April checks. I'm going to start with Director Kellogg.
I'm still reading attorney report. Okay. Take me a minute to get that.
Okay.
Guess I'm not so ready. I couldn't find a check for the survey work that had been done around the properties. Have they been paid? Dustin?
Which property?
Yeah, the survey work.
Which property?
The rental properties that we have on the agenda for selling tonight.
That survey work was done when we realigned the lots with the corporation yard?
Did we pass the new survey lines at that time?
Yes, those have been in place for a few years.
I was going to say that was about three years ago? Two and a half years ago?
Well, the changes were made three years ago in the lines.
Yeah, that's when it turned into two parcels on the front and we realigned the back parcel.
Okay. That means the garden is part of the house then?
Yes, it's on the house property, correct.
And I know this was out of line, Seth, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. No question, let's get it answered.
That's why I didn't, I thought that was something we'd done currently. I was curious about Dustin's bill on April 22nd for $8,680. I didn't have a chance to go through it. I got some of it digested. But I'll be happy to report to the board that there was no time spent on my issues at all, so there should be no complaints from the board of me using attorney services.
What issues is that?
None.
Okay.
So, at any rate, that probably counters, does my part on the question.
That's all the checks or questions that you had on the register?
Yep.
Okay. Director Jacobson?
Just one question. I noticed we list Cranmore and FGL Environmental last budget and this one here also. I was curious what, those two firms I think do pretty much the same thing, don't they? And I was curious why we use them both.
They don't do exactly the same thing. There are certain tests that one can do, and there's timing issues with us getting to certain, getting the samples to certain people, so that's why we use them both. But they don't both provide the same services for all the things that we need tested.
Okay. They, the FGL Environmental and Cranmore, do they do any testing from the water treatment plant itself? Is that what the services report?
Yes, yeah, there's, there's, there's samples taken at the plant as well as in the distribution system.
Okay, so just for third-party audit or?
In requirement by the state.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
That's the only one you had?
Yes.
Okay. Director Duncan?
I had one little one on page 28, the bank fees. It's very small, it's only $39. I was just curious what it was?
Office bank fees.
Please, Steve, ender.
For serve solutions?
I am not sure what that one. I think it has something to do with our credit card processing.
Credit card?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Director Hunt?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions on this once. So if, I'll entertain a motion for approval of checks.
I move we approve the general fund checks, numbers 49222 through 49292 for the month of April 2016 totaling $244,086.93 exclusive, avoided check numbers 49250, 49261, and 49276, and authorizing a similar amount, allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of May 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, not seeing any. Anybody from the public like to comment on the April checks, approval of the April checks? Not seeing any, I'm going to close the public portion of that. Can I hear somebody? No? Okay. All in favor of approving the April checks, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Not seeing any? Passes five zero. We're going to go to item number five, old business. Item number A, AECOM agreement amendment to contract. Manager Barber, will you kick us off?
Yeah, this agenda item covers the charges necessary for when we paused the project. And then we're also trying to finalize issues that have come up through the engineering process to deal with them right now. The couple of the big ones are the McNab Cypress study. That's a, that's a study that wasn't envisioned when the project was first bid, and the level of effort there was not in the original proposal nor the cost for it. And then we need AECOM support as we get our SRF funding, our low-interest funding from the state. And part of that funding, it's not like a normal funding process. The SRF folks do a lot of review of all aspects of the project, including SEQA and our permits and our reviews from other agencies. It's also federal money involved, so there's additional, they call it SEQA plus. We don't have to do a full NEPA federal environmental document, but we have to do more than normal for SEQA. And we had a meeting with AECOM and the state SRF SEQA specialist and got dialed into what their needs are, and so those costs are shown in this as well. And I've got Carl Boyer here, if you have any questions, and Tom Bernard with AECOM, Jeff, our environmental guy in the back, if you have any questions about the proposal, they're here to answer them.
Okay, just for the public's information, the SRF, what is that?
That's a state revolving fund loan, so that gives us the ability, if we meet their approvals and jump through their hoops, we can get financing up to 30 years at, right now, the interest rates a little, 2% or less. So it's very aggressive, good financing for us. You can recall in the proposal for our rate increase, we had budgeted, we had placed in there borrowing of $15 million for 20 years, and that was at market rates of 5%. So if we can get this for a 30-year loan at 2%, that third year cost in the rate increase would be much less.
Thank you, George.
How soon can we tie into that? How soon can we tie that down, that interest rate?
We're, we're trying to jump through the hoops right now, so that's why, you know, they need, they're asking to be on board to help us get to that point so that it's a quick process. And as soon as that process happens, the other thing to think about too is that we've spent a lot of money going forward, that's all reimbursed through that SRF funding too. So all those engineering fees that we've paid out will get actually reimbursed for that, and it'll be built into the loan.
But do you have a time?
We've jumped, we've, we've provided the information on the basic project. The financial package is in line, what's lacking is the SEQA package, and we likely can't get any firm commitment from them until our SEQA is complete, which we have a goal of getting that completed by the end of the year. But these McNab Cypress surveys will certainly potentially have an impact on the schedule of SEQA. The first one will be a big key.
I just can't understand why the McNab Cypress plot plays into effect to something we're doing at the treatment plant.
That's my question. Why, what are we doing now that's different that affects the McNab Cypress?
We're going to be removing some.
But we weren't going to remove them before?
Potentially, well, but we weren't, we weren't sure. Actually, originally, under the, at the level AECOM came in on, the project was mostly designed below the treatment plant, and there wasn't structures really contemplated that we're going to take any McNab Cypress out on the upper area, so.
And what upper area is that?
It's going to be near the raw water storage tank.
Oh, still down inside the plateau?
Still in our property, yes.
But just cutting into the hill where there's a few of those scraggly trees, beautifully scraggly trees?
Beautiful scraggly trees, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from directors for AECOM?
I have a question on the SEQA compliance addition services. I read it through quite a bit, and from what I can see, any good biological resources we have in this area could have bid on this thing. It's $41,000 for, I think that's the total, if I'm wrong, correct me, but it seems like a lot of money for what's going to be done, exactly what's going to be done. It could be done with a good biological firm in this area, why, why isn't it being put out to bid to see? We never put the original plans out to bid, just went to one agency, and this is the same situation again. I think the district could save some money by putting it out to bid, at least that part of the thing. And I think to do otherwise is not doing a good job as director.
Well, I think for clarification, we did put the original project out for bid for our engineering firm. We had three engineering firms here.
Yes, we did.
So that's not exactly true that we've never put it out to bid.
Yes, but the second part of it was just one firm. After the three, we selected AECOM for the original look-through at a very cheap rate, and it immediately went, when it came time to bid on the whole thing, they were the only bidder. And I'm not wrong on that one.
Okay.
Is there any reason, George, that we can't put this out to bid as a separate item?
Well, we have a contract for environmental services with AECOM, so to piece and part that out to another agency, one is not a normal process for us. That's why this is an addendum to a contract. And two, it gets a little complicated because you've got one agency writing the document and another agency potentially doing the work. I don't believe we would save any money because there's going to be extra work on these folks' side, subcontracting with someone locally to try and figure out who can do the work, who's capable, and then those people working on a project that they're only a small part of, so I can't envision a cost savings there. But that's just my opinion.
The other directors have already bought up the trees, the McNab Cypress, and some, is that on our property or the Forest Service land that you're talking about?
It's on our property.
All on our property?
Yes.
And that's on top of the serpentine soils?
Yes.
They have special requirements for treating and engineering and doing things by the state of California?
Same requirements we dealt with on the Magalia Bypass.
Where'd you go through the serpentine rock there?
It went through, towards the bottom end of the project, we dealt with serpentine rock. And we dealt with serpentine rock on the footings before the pipe crosses the spillway channel, so there was asbestos requirements built into that contract because we knew it was there.
Thanks, Tom, for the know.
So when you're saying other directors bought up the McNab Cypress, you're talking about previous boards?
No, I'm talking to both you and Ken just a few minutes.
Brought it up.
Oh, brought it up, okay, I thought you said bought.
Mentioned it. You guys should have used the word mention.
Is that all the questions you had?
Yep, that's it.
Bill, on that? Okay. So what George said sounds reasonable to me, and Tom, I don't know if maybe you want to, or one of your guys want to elaborate on that, trying to incorporate somebody else's report into your report is what it sounds like.
If you can go to the podium, Carl.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you got.
Well, Tom, either one.
I'm going to put, I'm going to, I'm going to put you on the spot, so, yeah, no, really.
That's why I brought him.
Welcome to our boardroom.
I think you could go out and solicit qualifications and bids or proposals for that work. It would take you a period of time, I'm not sure what your process usually takes you, maybe six weeks, maybe two months at the minimum. It would also require us to wait to execute the, finishing the document. I honestly don't think you'll save any money in doing that, primarily because you're going to have costs associated with putting it out.
I'm not saying anything more, Tom, you go ahead.
Another thing to consider is these McNab Cypress studies have windows that we have to do the study. We can get further clarification, but one of them's right now coming up, and then there's another period later in the year that is when you go out and do these surveys. So at this point, we don't have the time to go put this out to bid, and we would miss the first window.
I think we'd miss the second one too. I believe it's the end of June, from what I read in here somewhere.
I think it was.
Jeff, is that correct?
That's correct. One of them is right now, and so with the approval, the buy-in is looking up in the next couple of weeks, the next bid, the end of June.
Yeah, the timing seems most important to me. We're already looking at a projected end date of July 3rd, 2018. Is that right?
Yes.
Cranking this guy back up for the two months that we lost with the rate increase? That two months is costing us six.
Director Jacobson?
It's a bit of a delicate balance in terms of the timing. I don't, I can't speak to what other firms' rates would be and what they would charge to do the same level of work, but I don't honestly believe that you would save any money in doing it and you would threaten your timeline.
Well, I hear Director Kellogg's concerns. That brought up my question here too, sort of related. We're looking at an extension of six months that we're going to be in violation of the permit compliance date, so what's the repercussions going to be on that to us as far as daily fines for not being in compliance with the, with that completion date? Because that would seem to me to be a real big concern if we do anything that's going to slow the process up already because we're behind.
Yes, I think, I think it would be too. And I think that there's, there's basis for some leniency on the part of the board, but I'm not sure that there's any guarantees.
Yeah, there's, there's no guarantees, but so, so the board knows our, our strategy, I guess. And that would be, we have an opportunity to ask for another extension, and, but we don't want to ask for that extension until we have a contract approved, financing in place, and a contractor breaking ground, then our likelihood of getting that extension is very good. The other, the flip side to that is if we did start occurring violations on July 1st, we're spending a considerable amount of money to fix the problem, and we would expect that that would be recognized so that we may get officially fined, but the funding wouldn't, it wouldn't be a dollar coming out, it would be just assuring that we continue to, to make sure this project gets done.
Like they did last December.
Like they did last December.
Well, I've noticed that, I mean, we passed up quite a few dates in the past according to what I've read up on, and they've only got so much patience, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I would think that, one, if we've, if we've decided on you people as who we're going to go with, and you're sort of design-build kind of thing, then we, I think we need some assurances too that you guys will do everything you can to expedite this and to work with, wherever you have to work with on our side to make sure that the state knows that we're accelerating towards compliance so that we don't end up at the last minute finding out that we've got some penalties that we have to pay.
I would agree. Yes, sir.
My question's to Seth.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, Bill.
I'd like to hear from Dustin his opinion on the delays, since he's been involved personally, and refer back to what Doug Fletcher found out when he went up, two, and sat through meetings and saw deferments after deferments.
Well.
Different people, so I thought Dustin might be the best to advise us on that.
Yeah, remember you had the regional board staff at one of your meetings held at the Performing Arts Center, and we asked them that specific question, if, you know, we let the schedule slide a little bit, would they consider another extension of time? And the answer I heard was basically no. So I, I think it's, I'm even a little nervous about breaking ground. I mean, you, at some point, they're going to say enough is enough, we've got these water quality standards and we're going to hold you to it. So I would not bank on any further extensions. I think you should expedite the project. And I, I don't know where this July 1 date came from, I always thought it was January 1st.
It was in our board packet.
That's our schedule.
July 3rd is.
That's AECOM's schedule, yes.
Yeah, that's not the, that's not the extension schedule.
It's January 1st.
Right, so.
Six, six months and three days.
July 1, where you potentially are subject to.
I think, I think George had misspoke and said July 1.
Yeah, January 1's the window.
Yes.
Yeah, I heard that too, so I was going to get some clarification on that too.
So I hear you saying then that they're going to, they're very likely to cite us in violation if we don't get this project finished by this date that we've given them originally.
They already are citing you in violation. It's, this is another level of non-compliance potentially if you let the current, if you basically make it known that you're not going to meet your time schedule order, and there's really no, it's, it becomes an impossibility for you to meet your time schedule order.
Basically, their, their feelings on it before were that, why take money out of the project to impose fines on us even though those fines are sitting on the books as we speak?
As long as you're proceeding in good faith.
Yes.
With fixing the problem, the state may subject you to an administrative complaint, but thus far, we've just shown them receipts, and it's been a kind of an in-kind, you paid $30,000 to AECOM as an example, we'll consider that $30,000 paid in penalties. So it's not a new dollar that you have to pay.
Exactly.
But at, but at some point in time, are they going to ask you to satisfy that debt on top of the expenses of putting the system in?
No.
Not yet.
No, not.
I mean, we don't have any assurances of that, just a verbal.
If you stopped the project today and said AECOM, we're no, we're terminating your contract, I think.
Then they're going to fine you, I get that.
The state would immediately transition into.
Sure.
No longer Mr. Nice, they would, you know, they would not offer that in-kind payment of the penalty, and it would be real dollars that you'd have to pay.
But I would assume that, and you've worked with the state before, and if you're on the project and we've commissioned you, and we haven't done anything to get in the way of slowing down that process such as going out for bids for little pieces of it, then do we have some pretty good assurances that they will eventually waive those fees that we owe them for penalties once the project is completed?
It's been my experience that they're, they are fair, and, and as long as you're not dogging it, if you will, if you're not doing things to delay the eventual compliance and that you're making a due diligence effort to progress the thing, it's when you start doing things that, that would indicate that you really don't want to comply, that they would start playing hardball with you. But I think if, if the process is moving forward and you're showing good faith, that they're not going to, what they don't want to do is they don't want to start a, set a precedent to let people, you know, just come up with multiple excuses to get by.
How many projects roughly have you done like this in the last 10 years?
I'd say literally dozens of them in California.
And how many times have people been behind schedule and had penalties assessed that they hadn't paid?
I would say the vast majority are not in the situation that PID's in. In terms of, in terms of having been in a conflict with them over the MPDES permit for how long, George?
10 years, 10 years.
Yeah.
So we're really.
That's pushing, that's pushing even the extreme boundary.
But we have no, so we have no track record of what they will or won't do in a situation like this because we've not been confronted with these violations in your other projects. So my experience with the state has been that they say one thing, and at the end of the day, they hold out their hand, and so I'm.
Cautiously.
I'm, exactly. I don't want to be negative about it, but when I see something that says, this just put us six months past due, and then I read that we're typically theoretically being fined $10,000 a day, times six months, that's a lot of money, and I'm kind of concerned that, that they would not smack us until the job is done, but then after it's done, say, now pay us.
Well, I think, and you can clarify this, up until the time that, that the stop work on this was issued, there was tension there, but the district had been making progress, and they had been showing good faith. The, I think that the board, the regional board came down and made it quite clear at that meeting that the level of tolerance won't be continued if the accepting responsibility for correcting the issue isn't handled properly, so.
I think what Director Fletcher saw when he went up to, I believe it was Redding, was where he went to the meetings at, what he saw there is different than our situation, but then when he asked the question at the Performing Arts Center when we were there, it seemed to me quite clear that they, they were done. If we want to say stop, then they're going to say go as far as going forward with their fines, so. And we all know the fines are sitting there waiting, they've been real lenient with us, I think we can count ourselves lucky in that respect, but I don't anticipate that. I didn't get the, I didn't get the impression from them that they were going to keep up with that level of tolerance with us.
Well, I mean, the fines are there, we're in violation, nothing we can do to change that, so I guess the best thing to do is make sure we move along in an expedient manner and make sure. and make sure that we don't do anything to delay the project so that we don't give them anything to handle.
I thi- I think they're generally, their intent is to, to see compliance. And, and if you're doing your due diligence and you're progressing it as best you can in good faith, I don't think they're gonna, I think they'll do what they've been doing and they'll waive them either in lieu or otherwise. But obviously, there is no guarantee we're gonna move forward. Thank you.
Wait, hold on a second, Tom. Was there any other questions from Director Hunt?
No, no, it's just a question of delay and a little bit of additional cost. We're gonna have to go forward. I just wanted to know why we hadn't recognized the McNabb Cypress in the first place. But of that, now I understand we weren't gonna go up there and disturb that, that, that slope. Now we are.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your guys coming up here tonight, too. Okay, so any further discussion from the board? Okay.
The total, proposed total here is a hundred and, oh, excuse me. One million, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Let me switch that screen.
One million, seven hundred and eighty-eight, seventy-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight. I don't think that's a little bit of money. And so...
The change is only a hundred and twenty-seven.
That's not, that's not the change.
The change is a hundred and twenty-seven.
No, in, in reality, the change is not a hundred and twenty-seven. Fifty thousand dollars or near fifty thousand dollars of that-
It's the startup.
Is a penalty that we're paying for shutting down the engineering-
Right.
For two months. So the real additional cost to this is the thirty-six and the forty-one.
Seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty.
Yeah, we're not approving a million tonight.
We already approved that.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're approving the change of-
A hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, I stand corrected.
Right.
Was, I guess that's a little bit of money for some people.
It, it is a little bit of money, but-
A lot for me, but-
That's the, that's the, unfortunately, the price we paid for shutting down the project, in lieu of the issues that we had to resolve. The, um, oh, I'm thinking about that, I lost my train of thought here.
Well, I'll start a train on a track.
Okay.
I move approval of AECOM change order, change order number four is presented for the Process Water Recycle Project and to authorize General Manager to execute the change order.
Second.
Okay, so I know what I was thinking. The design reactivation, did we not approve that at the?
Yeah, I thought we did.
At one of the PPA meetings?
You did approve it, but I, I had committed to bringing it back to you for, for-
Once it was actually incorporated in.
We approved George to go out and tell him we're moving forward and get the final number. I got confused on that also, called in and Georgia.
That's why, I was saying, I thought that was, but yes, you're right, we did. Move forward and get it going again. Okay, any further discussion from the board? Or any questions right at this point? Anybody from the public like to comment on item A? The reinitialize, ah, reinitialization of the contract with AECOM and these changes that we're looking at here for the SEQA documents and reports? Not seeing any, I'm gonna close the public participation part of this at this point. Nothing else from us? I'd like a roll call vote, Georgia.
Director White?
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Jacobson?
Yes.
Director Kellogg?
No.
President Corley?
Yes. Passes by a vote of four to one, Director Kellogg being the opposed. Okay, we're gonna move on to, um, is that all that they have here?
Yep.
At AECOM? Thank you, gentlemen, for making that long drive for that. We certainly appreciate all that you're doing. Absolutely. Good seeing you guys.
You know-
Dad, we want you to- It's good to get to-
On the, on the first hottest day of the year, I'm sure you enjoyed your drive immensely, right?
And if you can speed the project up, please do.
All right, thanks for coming up.
Cliff Jacobson, glad to meet you.
All right, we'll see you soon.
Cliff, glad to meet you.
Thanks again, guys. Old business, item number B. Restructure of the Paradise Lake Recreation Committee, Director Hunt.
I brought this up back in early April and, uh, we put it off at that time, so it's back up at this time. I will just kinda bring us, I'm gonna reread what I've written because it really says it all. The Lake Committee is our most costly of all of the committees in the PID organization. And for what? We get about forty-five thousand dollars in gross income per year from the lake activities while paying out over two hundred thousand dollars per year in salaries, benefits and expenses. In addition, we consume, not counted in that two hundred thousand dollars, a lot of expensive management time and energies on issues that are not overly important. We currently, you know, we currently populate the Lake Committee with the General Manager, the Treatment Plant Superintendent, who is paid overtime for attending the meeting, the Lake Patrolman, who is paid overtime for attending the, the meeting. It's populated with two board members who are paid a stipend for attending the meeting and is populated by various other agency and public members. There must be, I don't know, fifteen or twenty people on this committee. In addition, we use the highest paid regular employee of the district in a secretarial function of taking minutes at the meeting and then going back, pre- rereading his notes, make it turn, typing up the minutes report for the next committee meeting. And we simply have no other committee in the entire PID district where we designate, uh, somebody to go to the expense where we're paying them and to produce, uh, the minutes and a report production to facilitate the committee, the committee's business. And I'm saying, for what? This is not real technical. This is not really important about us cleaning the water and taking care of, of our business. So I'm just saying, let's realign our priorities and stop the wasteful expenditure of PID resources. I suggest we consider appointing only Jim Pastenisi as the treat, uh, who is the Treatment Plant Superintendent, to be the only PID employee assigned to the committee. So not have George show up there, not have the Lake Patrolman show up there unless, of course, there's a particular reason to invite the Lake Patrolman for in particular input about something that's coming up. I mean, that always happens and it could happen in any committee. I also suggest we require the committee to hold its meetings during regularly scheduled workdays and work time, just like every other PID committee meets, Monday through Friday, regular work hours. The, the, the members of the committee make it happen, as do the employees. Um, I also suggest that the committee chair be responsible for the note-taking and to facilitate, uh, reporting to the board instead of this lengthy, verbatim almost minutes that are taken now, uh, as is done with a hundred percent of the other PID committees. I'm just saying, realign it like a real PID committee. Get rid of all that extra expense and let's move on. So that's what I wanted to bring up for discussion and determine whether anybody else on the board felt that way.
Thank you, Director Hunt. Director Duncan, comments?
Well, I've been on the Lake Committee for, for over ten years and it used to be a lot of fun. Lately, it hasn't been that much fun. But, um, yeah, of course, you, I never looked at it this way, how much resources we're using. We did, our next meeting is during business hours, uh, which I initiated to see if, we were worried that a lot of the com- volunteer committees couldn't make it, but all of them seemed to say that if they have enough notification, they can make it during the time. I, being I'm not the chairman, I can't, can't say that I would want to take the minutes if I were. But, but maybe, I know, uh, on all the other committees, we don't do detailed minutes.
Right.
We, we just, we make notes and we make a report. The other thing is, um, I, I think the lake, even though we don't make money with Kids Fishing Day and with, uh, uh, the lake, it's, it's a jewel of PID, I believe, and, and it would be a mistake to, to close it down to the recreation that we have up there, even though we can't do it because of a loan, but that loan will soon be paid off. But I'm fully in favor of keeping the lake, uh, o- open to the public. And, uh, I, I have no problem with doing this, what you, doing this and I think that everyone else will go along with it. I would suggest that maybe, if Jim doesn't need to be there, cause he is a very expensive employee and we are asking them to cut back on their, their time to save the budget, I was thinking that maybe if we did it during the daytime, I, I think Greg would be a, a good person to be-
Does the two committee people from the board and Greg and then the, the other-
Yeah.
Agencies and public?
That's what I would suggest, cause Greg knows more about the lake than anybody else. Uh, Jim knows more about the water treatment and everything and he's always doing the technical stuff.
Well, that, that probably would work out just fine, too.
Right. That's my feeling.
I, I can't see that, no offense, Jim, but having you there, I don't know if we, at the Lake Committee, they discuss that many treatment plant type issues as come up more as issues like to boating or kayaking or things that Greg's directly involved with. So I cannot see taking Greg out of the, the mix there. That's, I, I just, I can't fathom having the person that is at the lake not be on the Lake Committee.
Well, and if it ever got into water quality issues, then you just ask Jim to come in for a particular meeting about those type topics.
You know, he's, he's come in on some deals that, uh, that are, he only knows about.
I, I'm sure there are times that, that he is, you know, necessary to the meeting. And like I said, I, I would prefer to just have you there all the time, but that's, if we're looking at cutting back on some things, I didn't think Jim had a problem doing the minutes. Um, he's kind of a detail-oriented guy, so, um, I would kind of think that's something, but I do understand-
He does what he's told to do.
I do understand that takes time out of your, your day. Are we required to have, to take detailed minutes of the meeting or just notes like we do in most committees?
Nope.
Okay, so what were you gonna, you wanted to?
I just wanted to remind you that Jim's area of responsibility is the lake and recreation.
Sure.
And so, um, that's why he's there. If there's general, if it's a general committee meeting with a lot of issues, yeah, he can step aside. But there, there's a lot of meetings he's gonna need to be there because he needs to know what's, what's going on in the area of his responsibility.
No, I, I understand. Like I said, I would actually prefer that he's there at all the meetings, but I also think that Greg is a viable part to that committee meeting also. Um, you said you talked to most of the members of the committee, the committee members?
They already held one meeting in the day.
No, we haven't yet.
Oh, I, I-
The next one will be in the daytime. And they all agreed if they had enough advance notice, that being during the day was no problem with them. And of course, it would help our employees because it would be during, during their normal working hours.
Well, I don't have a problem with it being during the day. That seems better for our employees. Um, and if everybody can make it, then, then there shouldn't be a problem with that. But I still think Greg should be a, a part of that meeting. Director Jacobson, do you have some comments?
Well, being new to the board and not having a lot of experience in the committee that takes care of the lake, I'm a little bit challenged here. However, I have some thoughts on it. One is that, um, that is our drinking water and security is definitely an issue these days. And, uh, knowing, communicating between the plant operator and the security that's up there at the lake and the people who run it every day, I, I think it's important that we have a cohesive team looking at it from both angles. It doesn't take much these days to pollute water. And I would, uh, drinking that water, I'd feel a little concerned if we were remiss on making sure that we had a good program together where everybody was communicating and letting people know of things that didn't seem right. In addition to that, it seems like, uh, and I, I have to say, I've lived up here quite a few years and I've never taken the opportunity to go up and see the lake until becoming a board member. And I was quite impressed with, uh, the lake and the setup that they have there. And I see that a lot of people do use that as a great recreational resource. And with the, the attitude that we've come off lately, I think that we should do every, everything that we can to keep, uh, all of our customers happy about what we do. And I think that's a, a small thing that we can do is to provide that piece of recreation for them. And at the same time, make sure that we're protecting the water that we're drinking. That's my thoughts on it.
Director Kellogg, I saved you last cause you are the committee chair and I wanted you to hear everybody else's thoughts. I'm sure you've got some thoughts on this.
No, thanks for that, Seth, really, that was nice. The number one concern for the Lake Patrolman is security. The recreation is secondary. They've recently had problems with homeless and there's just too late patrolmen. And they've had to clean up after them and still try to keep a schedule with, uh, the lake. The most recent one, I understand, was at the Megalia Reservoir, which saves very little time from the Lake Patrolman. They showed me pictures the other day when I was up there and visited with them and quite a mess they had there. Hopefully, they've got it all taken care of. There's some errors in, um, in his proposal. Greg has never taken any pay for coming to the Lake Committee. He doesn't ask for overtime and he's willing to tell you that if you will talk to him. And so that one part of your thing is an error. The other part is most of this money should actually be charged against security and safety for the people using the lake. We have one boat up there that's got a gasoline motor in it and it's used for safety. Greg has actually pulled people out of the water and rescued them with that boat. And so that's a great part of it since we're having increased usage of it. I recently put on the agenda for the next Lake Committee meeting was actually looking for additional help up there because of the summer season. And the men are doing the best they can, but on the weekends, they're not putting in enough hours. They just simply don't have to do. So that would be at the most critical times of the summer when we have highest recreational use. We should consider a volunteer service with, uh, some other rec, uh, rec departments use with people that go around that could help them and possibly some other employees in it. As far as the cost of Jim Pastorene, we could save that by putting Bill Taylor back on the committee as the new note-taker. Bill Taylor is aware of the water quality problems and he gets considerably less paid than Pastorene. So you could do it a couple of different ways to-
How do we know that, Bill?
Well, wait.
I don't know.
A hundred thousand dollar a year note-taker.
Do, uh, if, you know, guys, I didn't interfere with your comments at all when you were talking. So I appreciate the same thing when I'm talking and I'll be done here in a minute. So I look at this proposal in general is, it, it, your priorities are to stop this wasteful expenditure of PID resources. I think you're, you got it wrong. That the lake is critically important to the reputation of the district, the people up there. When I was up there Saturday, I ran into a young couple that had been in town for five years and they were there with their children's fishing and they just thought it was a wonderful place to be with their kids. There was no parking on Saturday at the boat launch because everybody was trying to fish. And, and because we'd stocked it for Kids' Day, there was still lots of fish to be caught. And then, and the kind of thing it does for this district and our reputation in the community and so forth, I don't think we should play with it like this, especially in such a derogatory manner. So I'm in favor of us maybe changing a little bit, but I think the committee can come up with the suggestions and bring it back to the board. And Larry could even be considered taking minutes, I guess, if you're worried about dollars and cents. Larry's had experience taking minutes and he can make them short.
I have?
Yes.
I've never taken minutes my whole life.
Yeah, and you were chairman of the committee for how many years of the Lake Committee?
I never took minutes.
Who's, who's chairman now?
Bill.
That's all. Yeah, there's, it's a large committee, so it'd be very difficult for the chairman to take minutes and keep up with what's going on and make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak about things and do it in an orderly manner. Seth can understand that. After all, if he had to take minutes for tonight, he'd be in terrible condition. Thank you for your time.
I would like to respond to some of those items.
Can I respond to one thing?
Well, I was gonna get back to that one also.
Okay. Greg, I, 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 I'd wanna go back and review Greg's time to make sure, to see if he is or not putting his time on there. But I wanna remind the board that he doesn't have a choice. He must put his time down there. If he's on PID business- If he's on P.I.D. business, he can't make the choice of not getting paid for that time.
Absolutely.
The violation of, uh, what he lost.
Well, I'm sorry, I brought it up in that case, because now you'll go ask Greg and-
It's just the way, and so, that's- that's to keep us out. What if Greg, at one point, gets upset and comes back and goes, "Well, I never got paid."
Right.
That- that's- that's on that. We must pay our employees for the time that they spend on any type of P.I.D. business.
Kevin, I- I think that that's important enough. You need to report that, your findings, back to this board, once you determine whether we have any unrecognized liability out there, uh, or whether he has been getting- getting paid all along.
Well, well, we do. We have, there's liability, there's no two ways about it.
If- if he hasn't been getting paid.
He hasn't been reporting to me.
Yeah, so I just wanna-
He definitely is.
Yes, no question. But the... Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Bill, I agree with all those items you brought up. There's no- there's no problem there. Yes, we secure our water. Yes, we clean it. We pick up after derelicts. We have to do this. There's a lot of effort that goes into the lake, and I'm not talking about cutting back any of that effort. Those things is not, the things that you brought up are not related to committee business. The committee gets together, and it doesn't have a- a ten-minute discussion about the two barrels of garbage that were pushed over. You guys are talking about your plans for Kids' Fishing Day, improvements to the lake, better security, issues like that, and that's the committee business. And what was the last item related to security that has been on your agenda in the last year? Can you, yeah, can you think of any?
We talked about the homeless and, uh, them being up at the Megalea Reservoir. It wasn't particularly on the agenda, but-
And- and that's related to security?
Oh, yes. If you're gonna keep clean water, you can't have people pooping next to it.
What do we do with the bear poop?
Well, we don't exactly-
We clean it, okay?
We're talking about human beings that aren't very good house cleaners.
Um, and Bill Taylor taking notes? Why is it that the chairman just doesn't do it and report back to the committee, to the-
Don't have the time to do it.
Yeah, I think every- every other-
Well, maybe tomorrow, George and I is recorder.
Yeah, maybe you don't need a report like that. A- after all, you, the report that you give us is nothing more than reading the minutes that Jim Passanisi takes down. Boil it down into a Reader's Digest form, and tell us what the items are that were discussed and what you need help with.
I think I'm gonna end discussion right here. We've got other things to do, and this-
Well, you don't get to end discussion, though, Bill. Right? Now, you're interrupting me. Is that right?
Keep talking, I'm not gonna talk.
Gentlemen.
Well, I'm done. I just think that it's making a mountain out of a molehill, this, the committee business isn't that great. Let's just treat it like the other committees and move on. If it turns out it doesn't work out in three, four, or five months, we can always change it back. We can hire a secretary.
My suggestion would be to table this for a month. Let's see how the daytime meeting goes. Uh, I'm all in favor for us not having overtime and costing the district more for the two employees, Greg and Jim, that are there, and, uh, can't change what the directors make for being there. See how it goes, especially with the public, the public's input on this committee. I think if- if we were restricting that in some fashion with, uh, having a daytime meeting, well, then at that point, um, that might not be a good thing, not viewed very nicely from the board, uh, from the public's view of the board. But I think what we should do is just let the daytime meeting go, see if it worked out for everybody. Maybe during the committee, talk to everybody about, you know, is this working for you? Is this gonna be a schedule you can do? And, uh, I don't know if it will hurt Jim to take a couple hours out during the day. I don't know how long these things go, but I think probably a couple hours, what I've heard generally, is two to three hours at the maximum, if you have something really, uh, a lot of items on the agenda on there. But, um, we just let it go the way that it is right now and see what happens, because that will save the district money in just having a daytime meeting, uh, because those employees are already being paid for their- their daytime activities, correct? It's during business hours or daytime hours, eight to five, or however, whatever Greg's schedule is. Okay, so-
I think, I think the committee should have, um, an outline of what they do. We- we probably should look at that, see if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and see if it's accomplishing what we want, and then determining whether or not what we're paying for that is- is valid. Um, one comment, if we're willing to spend six thousand dollars for some fish, for kids to fish one day, six thousand dollars probably go a lot of hours of, uh, employee wages to keep the, uh, the lake looking good, and- and, uh, I think it's probably not that big of an issue. Um, I would like to see what the committee consists of, what their outline of responsibilities are, and how they're accomplishing that, and then maybe see what it actually is costing us. Maybe it's a big deal, maybe it's not, but we're kinda grasping at straws right now. We really don't know. So, I agree with you. I think we need to look into that and shelve it until we do have those answers, and then make a decision on it.
Yes. I don't think we, the board needs, I think the committee can work with, to its own self, just like other committees do, and just, and your suggestions are well-taken, and that, 'cause it is, uh, be- be, we're meeting at night and everything, that I think if we go to a daytime, it'll be a lot less, and we don't... I- I was just thinking, we don't, other committees, we don't have minutes. The com- the Lake Committee's the only one, so maybe we don't need them. What I do when I go to my other meetings is, I make notes on my agenda, and then when I make a report, that's what I use.
So, I make a motion that we just shelve this until, um, we have that information, and we bring it back up again for discussion?
I'll second that.
Uh, I'd like to bring up one point, request that, uh, Kevin, so we know what we're talking about, perhaps you could, uh, make an estimate of what these nighttime committee meetings are costing us in terms of the additional wages we pay to Jim Passanisi and to, uh-
Greg.
Greg Taylor, Greg. Um, you know, just- just so we know the dollar amount, project that for the however number of meetings they have over a year, and kinda give us a figure about it. Uh, and then, if it were to be moved to a daytime type of a thing, we wouldn't save all of that cost, but we would save some, and maybe you could tell us what we would save. Maybe it's not worth the effort. Maybe it is. That was my only comment.
Your thoughts on why we would not save all that cost?
Well, because if we're going to populate it with everybody else, if the same people are coming, both Greg and Jim Passanisi, and then George occasionally, you know, they're, that's time out of their day. We're not paying the overtime portion, but they're still getting paid.
Sure, yes.
And, but if we cut back Jim Passanisi, and we just have Greg, if we, uh, have it during the daytime, you know, where we're not paying overtime, yeah, then we're gonna see some, recognize some good savings. That's why I brought it up in the first place.
No, I, I'm all for the- the savings. Yes.
Most of our committee is volunteers. That's the reason it's so large. We've decided to have this one morning meeting to test out whether they come. One fellow since the meeting has told me he's not sure he can be with us. He's quite vocal and usually about different issues. It's just a test. I don't, and we may go back to evenings or not, but that's in the committee's thing to do, to have the board say how a committee should be run exactly, and who should be taking minutes and everything. It seems to me to be a little overreach, so, uh, and that's the last of my comments.
Well, then I'm gonna have to make a comment again. For the committee to decide unilaterally to go ahead and invite these particular employees from the division, from the district, to come in and pay them their overtime, that is what is not is right. And it's because we've had this this way for ten or fifteen years, that nobody recognizes that the board is causing this money to be spent, and the board can fix it. That's my-
Absolutely, it is a last comment. It's not a committee decision, it's a board decision, whether or not we will spend those dollars, so, um, that's absolutely correct.
I would like to know what they're spent for before I make my decision.
Absolutely. That's why I suggested, and you suggested, that we table this until we get that information. So, we don't have to make an amendment to have Kevin do what Ken asked, right? That's it. Okay. Any further discussion from the directors? I don't think we're gonna table it, we don't need-
You can just table it.
Items table?
There was a motion, but-
Yeah, I was gonna say, so, I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna table the issue until a future date, when we have that information available. You can tell me when you're ready.
Seth took over. Can you take, can you override the motion?
Why don't you allow for public input if there is any? And then, since we do have-
That's what I was gonna do, so-
We'll just-
Just vote on it.
Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna entertain public, uh, comment, you know, on what we just discussed. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this?
It seems very conceivable that you should be able to find somebody within a group that large that would take minutes. Uh, half a dozen of the other organizations that I belong to, minutes are always taken by volunteers. And then frequently, at least three or four of them, what they do is, the person that takes the minutes will then put it out on email for basic approval, and so if a person says, "No, I didn't take that motion," or, "No, it was six, not four," times a week, you know, whatever it is, little corrections, corrections are sent back, minutes are done.
Should be by somebody volunteering.
Just common sense stuff, right, Dan?
That sounded like Dan was volunteering there.
Yeah.
You're on it.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak to this at this time? Not seeing any. I am going to table, once again, table this item.
Why don't you just, you have a motion in a second?
Shall we go ahead and?
Why don't we just vote on it?
Okay, we're gonna, never mind, we're gonna vote on it, okay? Maybe I should go full vote and just go a roll call vote on it, but I think all in favor are tabling item B until a future date, when we have the information that we need. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Both?
Two no's.
Passes with a vote three to two. Directors Kellogg and Hunt are the nays. And I'm sure that was for different reasons.
No, we teamed up on that.
Okay. All right. Item number six A, real property negotiations. And, uh, I would say, Manager Barber, you're gonna lead us off on this?
Yeah, this is, um, this is, this particular item's related to the two pieces of property we own on Clark Road. Um, it's broken up into two parts, so, uh, we have received, uh, proposals from, um, three different, um, agencies, and we asked them to break them up between their marketing and costs, and their, um, opinion of value. And so, the opinion of value is what we're gonna talk about in closed session, um, so that you folks can have a, uh, an open discussion about that, that's appropriate in closed session, and then we can come out and handle the review of the proposals. Um, I'll be cautioning you that in the room, we don't talk about the proposals, we're only trying to get a discussion and answer your questions on the pricing side of it, and Dustin will keep you in check as well.
Thank you.
We can open it up to public con- comment before we adjourn into closed session.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to item six A at this time?
I just have one call.
Sure. You can do the podium, if that's okay, I know. Good to see you with us again.
The, uh, the non-rate revenue, uh, was, was a really useful, a really creative way to, to, uh, provide some assistance to, to, uh, low-income people, and I'm, my understanding is that, that these properties that you're talking about are the source of some of that non-rate revenue. And, and I don't know what the other issues are. Having been a landlord myself, I know there is not always, um, a barrel of fun, so I would just suggest that you consider that alternative as you're making your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public?
We should clarify, there's also gonna be another opportunity for public comment later on this, and when we return to open session on item eight A, there'll be another opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you, Dustin.
Seth, speaking to that, I don't know what's gonna happen in closed session, but I'd like to reserve the right to have a minority opinion from the majority if, if it comes to that in a closed session.
I don't know what a minority opinion is.
I can speak differently than the, whatever's stated about the majority's thing. I can say what my opinion is.
Sure, as long as in voicing your opinion, you don't share confidential closed-session information.
No, there's no intention of doing it that way, but it would be the express, my opinion. If I said opinion, I'd say facts that will be raised in a closed session.
Keep in mind, the closed session is to discuss price. It's not even for the board to decide whether they're gonna proceed with selling. It's kind of, if we're gonna sell it, this is the direction we would, we would give you. The decision to sell or proceed with sailing or not will actually be in, um, item eight A. That's when the board will actually decide whether to proceed with putting the property up for sale.
Thank you both for your clarification on that. Seeing no other people from the public, we wanna speak to it at least at this point, until we get down to item eight A. Um, we are gonna adjourn to closed session and go into real property negotiations. Good? And coming out of closed session, the board is prepared to make a motion as part of our announcement.
I, I'll make the motion. The board discussed this, and we're not of a mind to sell at this time. Therefore, I propose we do not list the properties for sale. However, because we have a, uh, viable offer on the table directly from a private party, which was li- is listed in item eight A, I believe, uh, I would say that we should let that private party make, uh, her feelings known, just as if any of the realtors in, in months to come, run across somebody who is interested in buying those properties, they would approach us and say, "Hey, are you guys now of a mind to sell?" You know, just because we don't, well, I'm kinda rambling on here.
Is that part of the motion?
No. God, I ended a long time ago.
That was a lengthy one. Do I have a second?
I'll second then.
Okay.
Just the motion. Just the motion.
Mr. Lawrence, is it called that we're not going, we're just, we're not going to list the properties for sale at this time?
Second.
Now, I have a comment to make. Because there's been a-
Now the discussion.
Okay. That, that's all I wanted to say, just because we have a, and a private party who's put an offer on the table, I think we should listen to what she has to say, and let the, thank the realtors with, for their due diligence and their efforts, but we don't wanna waste their time if the board's decided not to sell it this time, and, um, and, you know, if something comes up in the future, please, please contact us, but right now, we're, we're gonna sit on the property.
Thank you.
I think the argument that our public, or, uh, gave before we went into the thing had a lot to do with why I didn't wanna sell it this time, the fact that it does reduce our non-two-eighteen revenue.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Jennifer, Joe, I don't know which one of you guys are gonna-
So, Jennifer is here, and, uh, one, one of the reasons why I think a presentation is appropriate also is, she is our current leaseholder.
Absolutely.
So, she currently is leasing the property, and I feel it's, it's in the best interest of the board to know what the property is, how it's been improved by the leaseholder, and, uh, what, what's happening up there on the district's property, so.
Jennifer, so nice to see you here tonight.
Thank you.
You too, Joe. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, it's nice to be here. Thank you for having me, thank you for listening to me. I'm sure everybody's tired, it's the end of the day, um, but I did put together a presentation for you, and it's from the heart. Um, my name is Jennifer Chavez, and I've lived in the Paradise Community for a little over twenty-five years. My whole family's here, and I'm really, really lucky that they're all here tonight supporting me, and, um, I just wanna talk about the red wagon tonight, and what's going on in that building up there, because I don't think everybody in this room knows, but it's a pretty exciting place, so. I actually started the red wagon out of my home, believe it or not. Let's see if I can get this thing to work. Um, I don't know, can you guys see the pictures okay?
We can see on our screens.
Oh, perfect, okay. So, these are pictures of the kids, I started this in my kitchen, at my dining room table, and, thank you, let's see the pictures a little bit better now. So I started the red wagon out of my home, at my kitchen table. I'm a mother of three children, my husband works for Cal Fire, he's a captain locally, so we are not going anywhere, we plan to be in this community for a long time, and I absolutely love being in that building, and I thank you so much for running it to me, it really is such a blessing to be there and have that space. And I wish that you could come in, and I encourage you to come in and see some of the things that go on in that building, you'll be very impressed. I'm gonna show you some of the other pictures. This is my dream, I've always wanted to have something like this happen in my life, and I can't believe it's happening, it's growing rapidly, and these, my son, you can see my son, he's in the background on this picture, he is 11-years-old, and he loves to sew, my two other children also love to sew. I never thought that boys would be interested in sewing, but it's pretty awesome, it's better than their, than them sitting and playing video games all day, you know, they're doing something productive with their time. So I've had 400 people come through the building, over, over here adjacent to the PID, at the red wagon. So, when I first started out, it was just sewing only at my kitchen table, now I'm doing sewing classes, painting classes, quilting classes, crocheting classes, knitting, cookie decorating, jewelry making, crafting, I host school field trips. If you don't have children that are in the school district, you may or may not be aware, but there are not a lot of things in Paradise for our kids to do, it's, the resources are pretty limited up here, so I host school field trips, I also do summer camps, and I have a lot of birthday parties and a lot of fun things for the kids, as well as for adults at the building. This is one of my sewing classes in action here, and like I said, I encourage you to come by, it's a real cute little room, the small room in the back, that's where I have the students come in and sew, and then the larger room, that is where we do the painting classes, and we do those also for adults and children. This is a cookie decorating class, I actually have a local baker who comes in once a month, and she teaches her specialty cookie decorating class, that's become very popular as well. To the right, you'll see the adult painting class, this was a really fun class, so this particular evening, we had husbands and wives come, and the husband had to paint one half of the painting, the wife had to paint the other half, and then over a couple, over a couple glasses of wine, okay, so you can only imagine the fun we had that evening. So at the end of the night, then they would take the two paintings and put them together and become one, and then, of course, hopefully they hang them in their home if they agree to that. This is a cake pop decorating class the kids did, it's kinda like cookies, if you're not, some of the gentlemen might not be familiar with cake pop decorating, but it's just similar to decorating cookies, and the kids got to do that over the holidays. This is a grandmother and her granddaughter to the right here, they're making cookies, and they came in and made, we had a Mother's Day class for them, so they really appreciated having that time together. These are some of the completed sewing projects, I just have to show you these because I'm so proud of these kids. We're talking about kids that are six and seven and eight-years-old and older, who come into my shop, and it's amazing, they learn how to sew, and I wish you could see their little faces when they, when they walk out the door and they have a project that they made on their own, and it's just, it's just incredible. So, these are kid, the kids on, the girls on the right, I'm very proud of them as well, they actually made their first skirt, their first item of clothing, which is pretty awesome, and they made skirts for their, for their dolls, so that was pretty awesome, they loved it, and the little girls on the left, that was a sewing birthday party that they did. This is another Mother's Day craft that we did, and you can see in the picture, these kids were so excited. Most children love to please their parents, and I have little ones, so I know that they get really excited, and they really get a thrill out of doing things like this for their mom. These children in particular are homeschool children, so they don't have the opportunity that normal, you know, the child would have that's in the school system, to make things for their parents. And as a mom, I can tell you, I cherish the things that my kids make for me, and they mean a lot. The picture on the right is just another woodcraft project that we do, just to give you an idea of all the fun things. Here's some of the birthday parties that we do. The birthday party on the left is, those are junior high children that came in and they wanted to learn how to sew. The middle, the one that's in the middle, that's, that was a princess and superhero birthday party, so the kids got to dress up and come in costume, and they got to do crafts. And then on the right, the last picture there, that's a family that came up from Chico, and you can look at their faces and, and see as well, that there's just a lot of excitement going on at the red wagon, it's a very happy place. I'm really excited about my numbers. When I started this out of my home, I did have a vision, I didn't know that my vision would come to fruition so quickly, so I'm very excited about that. I absolutely love what I do, I love people, and I love children, and I love all ages, and I sincerely love what I do. I've worked for Feather River Hospital for 21-years as a respiratory therapist, and I just recently resigned from my position so that I could live out my dream, because life is short, right? You only get one chance. So it was a scary step for me to take, to leave a career that I enjoyed to do this, but this was just the right thing for me to do, and I love it, and I hope to continue. I just wanted to show you, in 2014, I had a little over 100 students come through my home. Last year, I had 776 students that came through my shop. When I, when I moved from my home last year, I moved into a small little 200-square-foot place, so now that I'm in the place next door, I really appreciate the 1,500-square-foot, because I have a lot more room to accommodate all the children and all the adults that come through. This year, the 247 students that have come through, that's just the first quarter this year. Last year's first quarter, I had a little over 100 children come through, or students, I shouldn't say children, because it's, it's children and adults. So, those are pretty awesome numbers, I'm really excited about, about the growth of my business. My goal, my number-one goal in doing this is to reach out to the community, I wanna make a difference in Paradise, and I wanna reach as many children and adults as I can in this town, and there are not a lot of places for kids to go and feel safe and feel loved and be told that they are worthy, and, so that's what I do. When these kids come in, I don't just teach them how to sew, I talk to them, and I encourage them, and I try to motivate them, and I just pour my heart and soul into every, every person, not just the children, but the adults as well. We all need to be loved, so it's not, I'm not just another ordinary, everyday business. I do a lot of things with the community. Community outreach to me, I never realized the importance of community outreach until I became a business owner, you know, and I, I was involved in the community before I did this, but now I see exactly what is happening, a direct reaction of what is happening with, with these kids that come through here, and some of them come from really difficult situations. This is the Boys and Girls Club, and I'm in partnership with them, and they come, there's two facets of this, these, this is a group of children that come in, and they come in every month, and then every week, I have high school intern, Boys and Girls Club students that come in, and they help me around the shop, so there's a lot of benefits for them as well. I also work with the Girl Scout troops, this is a Megalia Girl Scout troop, I went up to Megalia recently, and they requested for me to go up there, and these kids, believe it or not, they don't know how to thread a needle, and they don't know how to sew on a button. So I taught them that basic life skill, and they were very happy to learn that skill, and they walked away with a cute little project. I don't know if you guys know this or not, but with all the budget cuts in the schools now, we don't teach, they don't teach home economics. When I was a kid, they taught us how to sew and, and do all those important things and life skills that we need, they don't teach that anymore in the schools, so I had this idea come to me, that I was gonna go into every single classroom, and I haven't made it into every single one yet, but I'm on a mission. I've been in almost every class, almost every school in the Paradise Unified School District, teaching the children how to hand-sew and how to thread a needle and sew on a button, and it's pretty amazing. So that's, that was a second-grade class. This is me with the kids, this is another class at Children's Community Charter School, a class of third graders making a Christmas project. I'm a very big believer in donating. I donate my time to this community, I donate gift certificates on a regular basis to the schools for fundraisers, and for school raffles and things of that nature. I have also been known to donate sewing machines, I have a few children that come through, their families, they love to sew, but they're not able to, they don't have the means to buy a sewing machine, so I have been known to, I can't do it all the time because it's obviously a big expense, but I have been known to donate sewing machines to those children. So, I hope that I'm making a big impact, that's, that's my goal. This was a school field trip that came through just recently, this is a class of kindergarten children, they, this school, this was Children's Community Charter School as well, I got a phone call one morning, a couple of hours before these guys came, and they were frantic, and they said, "Jen, it's raining, these kids are all ready for their field trip, they're all dressed, they're all excited, but it's raining, so we can't go, is there any way we can come to the red wagon and, and have a field trip?" And so I kinda went, "Okay," so I, I rushed around and I, I got some crafts together for the kids, they had an indoor picnic, and if you look in that picture on the left side there, normally I have my tables in the center of my building, the kids wanted to push the tables aside so they could dance. So you should've seen all these little kindergartners, they were on the dance floor, they were dancing, they turned it into a dance floor, they did a craft, they had an indoor picnic, and you can see how cute they are, they had a wonderful time. Each summer, I select one student from the high school to do a high school mentor, a summer mentorship with me, and I teach them how to run a business, how to deal with people, how to work with children, how to use the sewing machines, and all the different facets that go with my business. This was a young lady I had last summer, and she was with me the whole entire summer last year, and she was amazing. I serve, every month, I have at least 50 homeschooled children that come through the red wagon. I don't know if you all know, but there are a lot of children in this community that are homeschooled, and homeschooling, the kids, you know, they don't necessarily have the same opportunities that the children do in the public school, so I love that I can offer a service to these children during the day, and they can come anytime and take classes. I'm currently a vendor for South Sutter and Corbute Charter, which are the two primary homeschools in our area. Along with that, that being said, a lot of these kids that come to me have some disabilities. I work with several children that have autism, they cannot function in a normal classroom setting, so they, when they come to the red wagon, I really give my heart to those kids, because they have, they feel like in their mind, they have a disadvantage, they can't, they can't sit in a regular classroom, and when they come to the red wagon, it's everything, a lot of them live for it, and I have students that come every week, and they live for it because they feel like they can't do anything else, they don't feel like they're good in school, or they're smart in math, and when they leave my building, they're so happy because they've made something, and I've shown them a, a life skill, and it's just priceless to see these kids. I'm a, like I said, my family is local, I'm a family business, I'm very proud to say that's my son up there, painting the walls, we've done a lot of improvements to the building, we intend to continue keeping it immaculate and taking excellent care of it, just like it's our own. That's my daughter in the middle there, she's opening up all the, the boxes so that we can get, put the hardwood floors down, and there's my son, 11-years-old, piling up the carpet and helping us. So it was a family effort, and I have to say, I could not have done it without my husband, he's my rock, and he actually laid all that flooring in for me, he spent a lot, a lot of time on that, so I am very grateful that he did that for me, it made a big improvement to the building. I have one of the most rewarding jobs, I worked in healthcare, like I said, for a long time, and that was rewarding, but seeing little kids that come through here, and not just kids, the adults, that come through and they take classes and they leave and they feel refreshed, and they feel like the weight of the world is off of their shoulders because they came, had a glass of wine, painted something, did something creative, and just enjoyed themselves, is incredible to me. It's very, very, very rewarding, and I really appreciate it. I'm very grateful that you listened to me this evening, I appreciate it very much. Those are thank you cards, by the way, that some of the kids sent to me from one of the classrooms up here. I have my contact information up here. I guess tonight, the main thing for me is, if you ever do decide to sell the building, I hope that you would consider my offer, that you would very strongly consider my offer, I would be thrilled to be able to buy that property, that would be a dream come true for me, so I just hope that if you do consider it, that you will consider me. And I encourage you to come by, come by and say hi, I'm not always there, I don't have normal business hours, I only, I'm only there when I have classes. Before I leave, I will pass out my business card, I have a newsletter I'm gonna give you guys, I got color copies for everybody, so you can see some of the awesome things that we're doing at the red wagon, please spread the word and tell a friend, it's really hard to get businesses started in Paradise, and I'm working really hard to make this, this happen, so I thank you, and I do wanna introduce really quickly, this'll just take a minute, this is Hoppy, he's from the Boys and Girls Club. You wanna come on up, Hoppy?
Thank you for your time tonight, folks, I appreciate being able to come. I wanted to come tonight and just really sing the praises, and she's done a phenomenal job tonight of saying what she does, the one part I would like to definitely hit on is she didn't really talk about the charitable part of what she does, and the impact that it really has. My name is Hoppy Campos, I've been with the Boys and Girls Club for 14-years, I run the Paradise-Megalia divisions. For anybody that doesn't know, that's five clubs, 37 employees, 511 kids a day. With that, we gotta have something for the kids to do. A lot of the things we do, we're looking for impact, we're looking for solace, we're looking for things that breed confidence in kids, and give them a reason to come back, to believe in themselves, to do their best. This is a present. I've worked in Noraville, I've worked in Chico, I've worked in Juvenile Hall, and I've worked at Paradise. There's something that makes Paradise special, I'm not blowing wind here, it's the people and it's the partnerships that are available, and it's the actual community of Paradise that makes it special. This woman is a fine testament and an example of what community is. She said my kids get to go once a month. That's my kids getting to go to her shop free of charge, sit in there for as long as it takes for them to produce a product that they're proud of, in an environment that's positive, that's wholesome, that's nurturing, and it is building to their self-confidence and their self-being. More than that, she runs a crew program through me, which is Career Readiness Empowerment Workforce. We started with Paradise Parks and Rec Department, we went through the docent program at Golden Nugget Museum, we've done Black Bear Diner, and now I'm very happy to say that we're doing red wagon. I have eight kids, four kids at a time, that rotate in weekly every Wednesday, come through, showing up on time, learning how to get real job skills because real job expectations are put on them. This is an unpaid internship that is giving kids real-life experience, turning kids, not just hireable, but making them desirable, and giving them not only the opportunity to grow and succeed, but the want to achieve for themselves. It's also giving them things, I have four guys that are doing this, that go through, and they're cutting fabric, and they're learning scissors, and they're learning trade skills, and they're learning how to take for themselves. I learned how to sew as a kid, I was on my own very soon. If I didn't know how to sew, I didn't have the money for clothes, a lot of the kids that I work with, they don't have things that are new. To be able to create for yourself is a survival skill. This woman is a lifesaver. She's creating great things in the community, I'm proud to be a partner with her, I'm proud you guys let me come in and talk today, and I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to keep something like this going, because it is the thing that makes Paradise special, it's people like her and businesses like this that come together and create the community that really build our kids. My ultimate dream is all our kids leave. They go somewhere, and then they come back, they give something to the next generation, and then they leave, and then they come back. That's what we want for our kids, but when they leave, we want them to have skills to share too, to say, "I'm from Paradise," and then they wanna come back to Paradise and bring other people with them. That's all I have to say, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk, it is a wonderful thing, I strongly urge you guys to go over there if you haven't, because you walk in, it's not only gorgeous, it's calming, we had a meeting there, and I ended up staying like 25-minutes and just chilling. I mean, I didn't have that 25-minutes, but I enjoyed it, it's absolutely beautiful. Thank you very much for your time, I do appreciate it, folks.
Thank you, Hoppy. Jennifer, I'd just like to say, I'd like, next time you come talk to us, be just a little more enthusiastic, you were kinda, you were kinda toned down tonight, you know, so, you know, you need to kinda pick it up a little bit.
I love what I do, what can I say?
You wore me out.
I, I've known Jennifer since she was a young lady, probably about 16 or 17-years-old, and it seems like her level of enthusiasm and things just picks up more and more and more, the rest of us are slowing down, she just seems to have more and more energy, I don't know where she gets it from, Joe's feeding her something at home, I don't know what it is, but...
Your presentation is very powerful, and, and I think we all heard it loud and clear.
Thank you so much for coming up. I think that Bill wanted to comment too?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Bill.
No, no. I wanted to point out that the board agreed to this unanimously, and Sep wanted you to be sure to have your presentation, considering the time, but, and that was a great thing you did just now, and that our newest board member, Cliff, was the one that became the moderator and actually the originator and worker of the unanimous vote for us as a board member. Make sure he's brand-new, just say he did something really great tonight, and say Sep did something really great, and you topped him both.
Yeah, you did.
Thank you.
Jen, Joe, thank you so much for what you're doing, appreciate it. Okay, we are going to move on to...
We are going to vote?
Oh, we gotta vote, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
We gotta give Bill that unanimous vote.
I just, I got so happy there, and Jen got me all warm and fuzzy inside, I was ready to just go. Thank you so much, guys, for coming in tonight.
So are we voting here?
Okay, so, at this time, can you read the motion back, please? Okay. All in favor of the motion, not selling the district property at this time, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item number, new business 8B... Item number, new business eight, B, recall election, Director Jacobson, if you'd like to lead us through that.
Okay, so, again, I'm a little new at this, so I've, I've been advised if I get out of bounds, I'll be reined back in, so I'll be keeping my eye on that side of the table, but I'm gonna, I simply want to read this, and I've got a couple of comments to make, and then we can open it up for discussion. While reviewing the potential recall, it's come to my attention that there are significant costs associated with this effort, and I believe it's important that our customers are made aware of these expenses. My understanding is that if enough signatures are obtained, which is three thousand two hundred and three, to include the recall on the November ballot, the cost to PID would be approximately six to ten thousand dollars. That's three to five thousand dollars per recall effort. If the required signatures are not obtained and verified by June seventeenth, then these costs, because of a special election, could skyrocket to between thirty to fifty, and that's just an estimate. And after winning approval from our customers to raise our rates, which we did recently, it seems poor timing to spend money on this effort. It was confusion and lack of information, and I might add a little bit of arrogance on all of us, that caused our customers to react as they did. And once they understood the reasons for the rate increases, I think most seemed to be on board. And, and I'm new to all of this, and again, I may be missing something, but I'm confident that these internal disagreements that we've had, which have plagued us a little bit to the general public, I think we can overcome them, and we can put some work together to become a cohesive team, as we should be, of board members, and be professional and courteous at the same time, and work through our issues. You know, I, I, it looks to me like we've had some problems in that area, and they've obviously created some concerns, and as I step into it with a fresh set of eyes, I, I see that, I think maybe there's something to be learned from all of this, and if, I think if we make it apparent to the general public, through whatever means that we can, that we intend to try our best to put our differences aside, and work together to resolve the issues that are important to everybody, us included, because we're customers as well, that hopefully we can, we can hold off people making a decision that may cost the board money. Not only money, but, put yourself in my position, I know a lot about water treatment, I know very little about being on a board, and I'm coming up to speed. However, I would certainly hate to be plopped down in the middle of this with everybody with all this collective knowledge gone, and then have to try and figure out how to move forward. There's an awful lot of knowledge and experience here between all of the board members, from Mr. Kellogg to Mr. Hunt, all of you guys. And if you were to be replaced by somebody like me, that had very little knowledge of how to run a board, I think we'd make a lot of missteps. And there's always time to do a recall, but I think we need to step back and take an opportunity to save some money, save some time, and get our act together, basically. And I would like to figure out how we can present this to our customers in a manner that they could take another look at it and say, maybe we need to hold off on this and give these guys an opportunity to get their act together. And I had a, a impromptu meeting unofficially with some people that were involved in the recall. Over the weekend, I happened to be at a hardware store, and I was asked to sign a petition. And I obviously stated that I, I couldn't, and introduced myself as the new board member. And I took the time to sit down and listen to what those individuals had to say, and what their concerns were. And they're genuine, they're, what they say makes sense, and so I had to go back and do a little research on my own to find out if these things were really as bad as they appeared to be at, at first blush. And so I, I did do a little bit of research on some of the items that they, they were nice enough to give me a, a list of the items that were important to them. And some of them, there's more detail than what meets the eye. I don't know if it's appropriate that I can read off some of these?
I don't know what you're gonna read.
Well, items that are on the public recall list as being distributed to...
I haven't seen it, but this is a publicly distributed document?
Sure. So, we, there's an issue on here that the, that the board allowed the approval of borrowing four-point-five million dollars for automated meters. And, and I immediately put down a note there, I need the details on that. So, I did some research, and what I found out was that there was actually about three-point-two million spent for the replacement of worn-out meters. About eighty percent of the district's total meters were, were wearing out, because when they were first put in, the water treatment wasn't that great, and the grit and the grind, the suspended solids that were going through the meters wore the internals to the point where the meters were getting gummed up a little bit and running slow. That was causing people to get underbilled, and they were actually using more water than what they were paying for. But more important than that, these new meters allowed the reading of flow without somebody having to come around once every two months, and physically write down what the meter reading was and subtract the difference. They immediately alerted that there's a leak. So, instead of going sixty days with somebody having a leak that they didn't even know they had, within a day or two, they were contacted, and the net result of that was that in a very short period of time, there were over, well, there were literally thousands of customers with potential leaks that were contacted. And after a year, it was determined that about fifteen-hundred acre-feet of water was saved alone by the reduction of leaks, simply from those water meters. And I did some quick math here, but I think that's about five million dollars' worth of water plus. I don't understand how we waited so long to put those meters in, because they certainly were money well-spent, in my opinion. So, that, that was one issue that came up, and I, there's a couple others, and I won't beleaguer everybody with, with all of them, but I, I did look at also the, there was a comment made here that twenty-five percent of the employees earning, were earning over a hundred thousand dollars, and so I did a little research on that, and I believe there's approximately fifty employees in PID, and of that, I think there's only five that are making over a hundred thousand, so that's ten percent, not twenty-five. So, I'm not sure where the number came from. I, I'm sure it was an honest error, but, but when I'm looking at all these things, although they're legitimate concerns, when you dig into it, there's a whole lot more there than meets the eye. There, there's one last thing that I wanted to point out here. PID has approved a twenty-million-dollar loan for a water recycle project, which will ensure our water rates continue to rise, and it was not included in the current water rate increases. Well, we don't have a choice. The state and federal government mandate to us what we have to do to be in compliance, as we found out earlier tonight, that when we're not in compliance, we stand the risk of being fined ten thousand dollars a day. That's a lot of money. It'll add up real quick. So, this is not something that the board just will and nearly approve. This was something that actually has been in the works for a considerable period of time, and it was shelved, and for a good reason. And I want to, I want to point out that Mr. Kellogg, as I've seen, has taken a lot of brunt for this wetlands thing. Now, personally, I think he deserves a round of applause, because if his idea of the wetland had have been viable, he would have saved all of us millions of dollars. I'm talking millions, okay? The difference between what it's going to cost us to put in the recycling system, to comply with state and federal regulations, and get us legal, is probably five to ten times what it would have cost for his wetlands if we could have made it fly. So, I feel bad that I even talked out against it at my first meeting, but I'm speaking from the heart, from my experience, and I love wetlands, it just wouldn't fly. His idea was fantastic, and I don't want him to quit coming up with good ideas, because that's thinking out of the box, and I think that's what we all need to do. And so, even though this idea had to be passed up on, I, I do think that we owe Mr. Kellogg a round of applause for that, and, and thank you for, for at least trying to come up with something that, that if it had have worked, would have been a big, big money saver for everybody, myself included. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's all I have to say.
Let's give Bill that round of applause.
I would like to make a comment, you, because you mentioned something, you read it on there, that said that, that ballot says the board has already voted to approve a twenty-million-dollar process recycling project. That's absolutely incorrect. This board has not yet, not yet today, approved that project. Well, we have only approved the study and the engineering.
Correct.
And, right now, our estimates are eighteen million or sixteen million, or, I don't know. So, you know, it's, it's just that people kind of take liberties when they write down things in generalities, and all of a sudden, they're saying we've already approved it.
Well, Ken, I just read what was written here. I didn't misspeak, I was just reading what was, what was written. And I was trying to make the point that there's legitimate concern, but at the same time, there's justification. And yes, we haven't actually approved the recycling center yet, but we certainly...
On that pathway.
We certainly are not going to not approve it, because then we're going to have to go back to Mr. Kellogg and ask him to try and figure out a way to make the wetlands work.
That's right.
Because one of the two we gotta do. That's just a foregone conclusion, I think.
Or we could just drink all our wastewater.
Mr. President, may I say a couple things?
Sure, absolutely.
I don't have any problems with anything you just said. I mean, you, as an individual, you have a free speech right. You can say, "I'm for a recall," "I'm against a recall," "I'm for an initiative, against it." But the reason I pulled you aside before the meeting is there's a paragraph in your letter that got me a little excited. There's a, a rule of law that says a public agency cannot use public funds on political matters. So, PID, the district, can't say, "The district's in favor of a recall," or, "The district's against a recall." And you certainly cannot use public funds either for or against a recall. So, what, what you voiced is all, as I listened to it, was all your personal opinion.
Correct. And, and being, I'm not taking remuneration for my position here, there's no money lost to the board.
No, no, and, and everything that has happened thus far is fine.
Okay.
But it's that next step, where you suggest maybe putting it in the Water Talk edition, some of this information...
Well, if you notice, I didn't read that section.
You did not. Thank you.
I was going to.
You know, that's where you can certainly, the district can put out information, but you need to be extremely careful that it is informative and not advocacy, you know, one way or the other. So, I just want to, before we get to public comment potentially, I wanted to make sure that we're clear, that there is a line here. You certainly can express your personal views, no, you have a free speech right, there's absolutely no limitation on that, but when it, when it comes to the district taking a position, that's where we need to be careful.
Understood.
What about the district taking a position on advising the public in general, at large, all of the public? That this is potentially going to cost the district thirty to fifty thousand dollars?
Again, I think it needs to be crafted very carefully, so that it's truly informative.
Just informative, just the same thing about how many people we have, you know, if, if dissemination is produced, should the district take a stance to make corrections to that for the general public's knowledge? Is where I think that, that was coming from. It's not to endorse yes or no, and, you know, that's clearly a taboo, we're not going there. But in regard to just making corrections to statements of fact, we don't have anybody out there advocating on behalf of the people that are being recalled. We have a lot of people advocating on the recall, and they're putting out literature that has errors. So, would it not be in the district's best interest to clarify those as quickly as possible to the entire public consumers?
I think we need to be very careful. And that's, you know, I can't give you hard and fast rules, I think it depends on the issue of fact, and, you know, I, I don't want to kind of on-the-fly here try to answer each and everyone. If you, as a board, want to put out an informative piece, I think you ought to task, you know, us with putting something together, so we can sit down and really try to make sure this is truly informative, it's not straying into advocacy one way or the other.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what he's saying, Ken, is the public can do whatever they want. We, however, have to be held to a higher standard. So, even though they can create whatever literature they want and ask for a recall, we have to be very careful on how we address that, because we are the board, and they are simply the public, expressing their own interest.
You, as an individual, or anybody else that's an individual, can put out their own piece, and they can advocate for or against, or however they like, but you cannot, as the district, you cannot do that.
Understood.
So, but we could, if the board so chose, react to items that we see printed in the post or printed on a, a recall ballot. We could ask, if the board so chose, for you to make a, make a non-political response to the accuracy of those statements. And many of them are going to be accurate, and if they are, then we should not ignore that, those are the accurate statements.
As an example, the, the cost of, the, the potential cost of the, of the recall vote, that came direct, I believe this is true, that came through my office, we had a discussion with Candy Grubbs' staff.
I remember seeing it, yes.
And that's, that's where that, so that, you know, we could ask, to really keep the district entirely out of it, if you wanted that information to be really public, we can ask Candy's office to prepare a memo to PID, and, you know, give an estimate of what the election could cost. You know, so there's a layer of separation here. It's, it's not even the district that's putting out this information, it's, it's the elections office. So, I just, you know, that's maybe one example. If, you know, responding to, and I've never seen that document, so this is the first time I've heard it, but responding to kind of, these are the reasons why we believe recall is, is merited, that's where I want to be really careful about putting out, you know, sitting down, making sure this is truly an information piece and not an advocacy.
Yeah, and then that becomes difficult for us, because we certainly don't want to pay ten thousand dollars to get that done, you know?
No.
Well, I, I think that we probably going to have to take our lumps based on our past, what we've done, and hope that, for the best, that enough people will recognize that we want to be a sincere part of the community, and help keep the board running, the PID running for the people as best we can, and work together as a team, and if we can accomplish that, hopefully in time, maybe it'll be a non-issue.
Okay, at this point... Director Kellogg?
I got the letter and everything, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Dustin, but I really appreciate what you just pointed out, because that's the first thing that hit me, was that, those two lines. Exactly what you said is the, the thing that had to be said tonight, so that we didn't do anything we shouldn't have. Now, I think part of what Cliff needs to be, got educated as fast as possible about the Brown Act. The Brown Act governs how we act, and laws and rules that we do. The Brown Act governs how we act and laws and rules that we do as board members. And you should get a training on it, you should get, there's publications available for you to read, that will help you when you try to promote something to keep you out of hot water on this, like what happened here. So, I would suggest very strongly, 'cause I've gotten a Brown Act education about four or five times in my history between the cemetery district, which I used to serve on, and this district. And I think it's very important that you understand the rules that we're having to live on, as public employees, and the things that the state has put in, and through the Brown Act, so. That, that's all I have on comments.
Ms. Eagleson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Corolla. My name is Lorraine Eagleson, also known as Rini Eagleson. I'm one of the proponents on the recall petition. And one of the interesting parts of, I was just kind of listening to the, the young woman in here talking about the red wagon, well, this is my red wagon. This is my way to participate in my community. And I hadn't been involved too much with the PID, was, you know, favorably going along with, uh, the drought restrictions, been in the, back in the town four years. And when the first 218 hearing came about, I was very ignorant about how it worked. And then when I realized that if people didn't vote no, out of those 10,000 customers, if they didn't vote no, it was considered a yes vote. Now, that's not the problem of the PID, that's a rule status that exists in our government. However, it was very upsetting, because a lot of people didn't know what was really happening. And so, we, the, uh, the protest ballot vote started, and that's when I kind of caught wind of it and became very interested in making sure that our voice was heard. You know what happened on January 29th? We were in this room. Uh, prior to us all being in this room, there had been a number of professionals that had contacted the PID, had talked to the manager, had talked to office staff, and said, "We think that room is too small. Do you think you could get a different venue?" And the answer was, "No, we think this will be adequate. We'll accommodate the people by putting speakers outside," which they did try to do on that night of January 29th, at 5:00 PM on a Friday, when it rained. And so it was very ineffective, uh, in meeting the people's needs. When I saw this being one of my first meetings that I had come to, the response of the board to this continuation of a hearing, I was appalled that there would be anyone on the board that wouldn't have voted for a continuance. It was obvious that the people wanted to be heard. And in retrospect, and I would think that Mr. Barber would even reconsider this, if at that time, they had prior decided to have it in a different location, that would have accommodated those probably 400, well, I'm not sure how many people were here, there was a lot of people here, I happened to be on the inside. Uh, we only had about 2,500 ballots at that time. You would have prevailed. And because of the way people were treated, that's what caused the revolt, was the disrespect for the people that had, they wanted their voice to be heard. And that's where I became very involved, then when we went on to the hearing that was continued to, I believe it was February the 8th, and we had the crowd of 800 or more there at the, uh, thank you. And it was at that time that we were all given a chance to speak, I think except Corolla did a wonderful job. However, we kept saying, "You couldn't answer our questions, you were going to wait till the next meeting." And then at the next meeting, uh, it was gonna be the next meeting. And it, so we never got answers to some of the concerns that we had with the irrigation department, you know, which is what was going on in the people's minds, about how they were even informed on, uh, this, uh, pick-your-own-rate plan. The other thing that happened that was very alarming to me on the night of the, uh, February 8th hearing, when we actually won, people still think we have won. They are not aware that we have not won, that there was a second 218 hearing. Even though they may have gotten things in the mail, they, they saw that as a success. And for those of us that realized what had happened, I was not aware a 218 could be back-to-back. I was totally unaware of that. Then we came to the point of, what other recourse do we have as citizens? The only recourse that we had was to do a recall. The obvious people to recall would be the people that were at least two years out. And, uh, so that, that was the election of the people that were put on the recall. As I hear the concerns about the cost of the recall, I'll just give you my personal experience. I called Candace Grubbs' office and talked with someone, and I said, "How much does it cost to do a recall?" And they said, "Well, it can be from 17,000 to 25,000 dollars." And I guessed, because I said, "Well, our, you know, we would not be able to raise that much money." And she said, "No, actually, it's the responsibility of the district to call an election." And so we talked about whether it would be a special election, or how we would do this. And our, our point was to not cost the PID money, that's why we're actually doing it at a regular election time. The issue that was brought up is that if we maybe didn't get the recall this time, that we would, uh, then call for a special election. No, we are gonna get this the first time or not. That's, that's where we're at. And I think the, uh, the issue is to, just getting your names on the ballot is our goal. We're gonna let the community at large then determine what they feel about your service on the board. So it's not anything that's vindictive, it's almost a, it's, it's the only response that we can have, because we did not have a voice, we were not heard, uh, in the, in the way that we were expecting to be heard. And another reflection came to me the night of the, uh, February the 8th, when we won, is that pick-your-own-rate was already disced. It was already, it was already pulled out, and that's why we were all there. And I think that is a deception, that I would lay on the manager here, that he presented a plan that was not even legitimately going to be considered, but caused confusion with the public. So that's why we're doing the recall. We would like to change, uh, the flavor of the board here, so that they wouldn't be voting so much for what the manager, uh, deems is equitable to do. And it's interesting, when it comes to our public input, then we wanna make sure we don't, it doesn't cost the district any money, but when it comes to the ratepayers who are paying for all of this and the salaries, that you're not concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Well, I don't really have any comments on that, so, um, I'll leave it up to the rest of the board, if they have any comments to what we just heard.
No comment. No comment.
Okay.
Hi, Will, naturally. The information that we got back from Candace Grubbs' office, uh, was, given the, the mechanics, the engineering of the recall process, you actually have until, I think it's June, I mean July 20th, or 21st, or 22nd, to collect these number of signatures, and then turn them in to the, uh, to the voter's office there, and get them validated and counted. If you, if you take the full amount of time to do that, and don't turn those ballots in until July 20th, I'll just say that that's the date, uh, then by definition, that's too late to be on the normal election, and it will necessitate, you don't get a choice. If you turn the ballots in and there are enough, then it will necessitate a special election to be called and held. If you however shorten your timeframe, and I think you have, what I read was June 17th, uh, and if you get the, the ballots back to the registrar's office or voter's office by June 17th, then, uh, the office there says that gives them enough time to validate them, and if they are enough valid signatures, then it can make the scheduled November election. So you may have a desire, uh, not to put the district to the cost of a special election, but unless you know what your parameters are, and I don't really know whether you understood that or not, uh, that is, this is not a discussion. And we already went well over the five-minute limit on public response-
Bring it in, remember time.
And we're gonna set a precedence here, if, if we go back and forth. Uh, certainly other people can come up and talk, but that's against our, our regulations. Uh, but anyhow, all I'm saying is that if you disagree what I say, go to the, go to the verification source, go to Candace Grubbs and ask and find out what they are. And, uh, that is the information that we got, uh, research produced from our legal firm, who got the information from Candace Grubbs' office, and presented it to all the board members. And, uh, that's what is awaiting us, should you be successful in getting the requisite number of validated protests or signatures.
Do, do I have, uh, an opportunity to ask one question of, uh, Rini, there? I'll give you that opportunity.
Thank you.
Is your intention to not turn in the signatures if you don't have enough signatures to make the required amount before that last day? Or do you intend on turning them in after that date anyway, if you do get enough signatures after that date?
Our intention is to make the November 1st, uh, election. If we don't make them by that time, we have no intention of going beyond that.
Well, I don't think we have any action that we're taking on this, right at this point, unless there was some type of motion that-
You have another public that would like to say-
Well, the only motion was- Oh, Barry, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
I don't know whatever happened to the five-minute rule.
I let it go long this time.
I think you need to enforce it.
This time I'm-
And with all due respect to the lady and her advocacy, Ken's response, I didn't come here for a clinical on special elections, uh, recall elections. Came here for board business, and we need to stick with it. And you only get one bite at the apple, and that's five minutes. And it's not a Q and A. They present their opinion, you sit there and accept it, walk away. It's not a discussion period. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Okay, if there's no motion, if there's no more discussion on this, no more comment from the public. We have anything, I guess there's no action that we're taking on this. We're gonna move on to item 8C, 2016 Water Conservation Program. Manager Barber.
Thank you. I just wanna kinda introduce this and, and tell you to get used to it, the way the state is looking at, um, water use and regulating it and getting more involved. I, I expect that I'll bring forward to you a water conservation program every year. This is about as simple as you get in a water conservation program, and all it has in it is smart, wise water use restrictions. I can report that the, uh, Water Resources Control Board, uh, did conclude their meeting today. They did adopt their regulations as presented and was discussed in your information. So, we will be applying for our, um, what's the term? Anyhow, we'll be, we'll, we'll be providing the calculations necessary that should establish us as having 0% need for conservation in 2016. So, my recommendation is to, to adopt this, uh, conservation program as presented. It's been through, uh, Dustin's hands, he's looked at it, provided his input, um, through this process, and then we can move forward with letting our customer know exactly where we stand for 2016. Cause we, we get plenty of questions of what, what's happening this year and what's gonna happen, and the newspapers reported us at 33%, and that's kind of where we were early on. But as of right now, um, we have the calculation to establish that we've got adequate supply, and that we have no need for, um, any percent reductions in 2016.
Thank you, George.
I have a comment.
Comment, questions? Director Kellogg?
On page, I pad, page 55, and number nine, it says, "The district general manager or his designate name may modify this water conservation program without further action or approval of the board or directors when said modification is, is required to apply with law, regulation, actions by the governor, state agents, similar mandate." I would like that to be struck. The board has a right, with the Brown Act, has the privilege of having special meetings on anything that changes, would change this thing. I don't think we need to give the general manager the authority, or whoever is designate is, to do this. This is the board's responsibility, and I think it should remain as such, and the general manager to carry it out, not the authority to act without the board's approval.
I'm fine with that, that's language that was in last year's conservation program that just got carried over. If you wanna proceed that way, I have no problem with it at all.
Dustin, I'd like, I'd like your opinion on it, though.
I would agree, if you wanna strike it, you can. The, the reason it's there is because the state has been a moving target, and they, they could still be a moving target. I mean, the, the way the, the regs were adopted by the state water board a few minutes before our meeting, um, started. So I, I know they made some on-the-fly changes, I got a report from some of my colleagues from the office, but I haven't had a chance to digest it. So, I'm kind of making some assumptions here on what was actually adopted, but there is a self-certification process, where you can say, based on our current supply, plus some projections of supply, along with, uh, 13 and 14 demand, that we have enough supply to meet that projected demand, and therefore we're a zero. The water board, so that, we would then present that to the water board, but as we've seen in other cases, the water board can choose to try to poke holes in it. And if they say, "No, you're, you're, you're not a zero, you're a 10%," then this clause would kick in, and, you know, the states, that would be, uh, a change coming about by state action, and then the general manager would have delegated authority to make changes, to comply with whatever the state says we have to comply with. So that was the original intent, but your original point is, "Well, let's just have a special meeting to do that." And that, that's fine, it's just a matter of, if you, as a board, if there's a curveball, so to speak, that, do you, as a board, wanna meet to consider changes, or do you wanna delegate to your general manager to do that? As George said, that was something in your 2015 water conservation program. Um, I think the only change I made was changing, it was paragraph 10 in last year's resolution, and we changed that to paragraph nine. So I think, aside from that, the language is verbatim.
So Bill, did you wanna strike the entire item nine? I don't think we can, I don't think we can-
No, no, just the, without further action or approval, the board or director- No, no, just the, without further action or approval of the board of directors when said modification is required in order to comply with any law, regulation, action by the governor, state, agency, or similar mandate.
I, I think you strike the whole thing.
I was going to say, it all, it all goes hand in hand to me, but...
Okay. It, it, Dustin knows better than I do.
I mean, even the last sentence assumes the general manager has made a change and then the last sentence obligates him to report at the next meeting what the change was.
For ratification. I remember us discussing this last year and it was done just because it was such a moving target with the state. They were changing their mind every other week and we were in a situation where we were out of time and just needed to make sure that we were keeping out of trouble.
So since it's for ratification by the board...
Okay, so, right, so exactly, so nothing applies unless we approve it anyway. That last, last sentence, where, you see that, Bill?
Or does it?
The last sentence says, whatever they do, we have to approve it.
What I'm saying is the board can meet by the Brown Act, 24-hour notice and act on something like this and approve it. It does not, it should not go to the general manager. This is the board's action that needs, but George, the problem we have many times with our board is the district manager will do something and then we're supposed to eradicate afterwards. Well...
Good point, yeah.
But what's going to happen and what are we going to do? Running over with a truck? We, we have to approve it if it goes that way. It's basically...
Why would we have to approve it?
Well, he's already, maybe he's already done it.
We can undo it.
Because the state required it.
And, and we can undo it. That's what the board's here for.
Yeah, we...
I, I see his point though, it's easier for us to approve it and then have him do it than to have to decide what to do about the fact that he did make a decision that we don't agree with or do agree with.
The only thing is, and, and we can, we can try it that way. I mean, but the, the bottom line is this, um, just because we can call a special meeting in 24 hours doesn't mean we're able to. Bill, are you ready to come in on this date? No, I can't make that. Ken will go, okay, well, Bill can make this date. Can you come in then? No, I can't do that. And we've gone through this before, especially if we want to get a, uh, uh, specially called board meeting done when it's not dark, to try and get people in at, at 11:00 AM in the morning or at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. So it, it's not as easy as it sounds, but, you know, we, right now, we don't have any real pressing crises, so I don't think I'd care which way it goes right now.
I do.
Okay.
I think we should leave it in there.
Well...
I think, I mean, what...
I'd be satisfied with that. I'd be satisfied with it taken out.
I don't understand it.
Yeah.
If he's, if he doesn't know what he's doing and he's doing it because the state is requiring it, then what is our problem?
I think we, we hired George for a job and so his decision, whatever decision he made is, I'm sure would be in the best interest of the district, not because he has some hidden agenda, which is the sense that I get. You think that if we give him carte blanche on this, he'll make some hidden agenda decision, which I can't see is related to water conservation, what could possibly be. And if we're going to have to ratify it anyway at a regular scheduled board meeting, then we could undo anything that he did.
Exactly.
So, but I can't see us wanting to undo any state mandated...
Well, I...
Decision.
Right, if we parse this out, I mean, that's exactly what it's saying. It's saying that the district general manager or his designee may modify this water conservation program without further action or approval if he has to comply with a law, a regulation, or an action by the governor. So otherwise you can't do it anyway.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. So leaving it in there does not affect...
I like it.
I, I can also tell you that if the state imposed a water, additional water conservation measures when we have full reservoirs, I'm going to call a special meeting.
No matter what.
Give the board my opinion and let them make a decision.
Seems like, seems like we've had a special meeting like that.
Yeah.
I say we leave it alone.
I do.
That's my, that's my...
So...
Go ahead.
I actually have a question on, uh, eight A. So each violation of this resolution may be prosecuted as a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment in the county jail for not more than 30 days or by a fine not exceeding $1,000 or by both. So what that says is that if I have a sprinkler that breaks and I flood the driveway and my neighbor reports me and you don't like me, you can put me in jail. And I think that that ought to be reworded that if I willfully violate this resolution, I could be prosecuted. Or if I intentionally violate...
Uh, we've gone through this quite a bit in prior meetings. Um, that language is directly from the statute.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not something George or I drafted. It's, it's right in this Water Code 375, et cetera.
So nine didn't come from them, but eight A does?
Eight A does.
No, nine is something we used in prior resolutions. Eight A is a summary of what that statute says. Um, section 377. And remember...
We decided before, wasn't it, that we had to at least have it in there to show that we have the intention of complying with their rules.
And, and this is, remember, you need to get the district attorney's office involved. It's not the PID or its staff being judge and jury here. It's most likely somebody that is just flagrantly, repeatedly leaving a hose on their driveway.
Exactly, but...
And, and five times they've been told not to do that and five times they've said no, and then finally the staff says, okay, let's...
Exactly, that's intentional. But I don't like the, it's the same ambiguity as prior in our conversations about not complying with state requirements on a time schedule. It leaves it open to interpretation and not, uh, fact. So basically what they're saying is, is if for some reason I don't like you and you screw up, I can use this to hammer you. And, and I don't like that. I, I would, I would much rather that we, because we've been forceful in sending a letter to the state saying that we, uh, we don't like their rationing because we don't have a water rationing problem here and obviously in a timely fashion, we didn't have to push that issue because the state came back and said, we recognize that all of you districts should be policing yourselves based on how much water you actually have. Same way, I don't know why we can't challenge that statement because common sense says it should say willful violation or intentional violation. Because violation is violation. I didn't realize I was speeding, but I was still speeding. I didn't realize I was leaking water on the road, but I was still leaking water. If I was intentionally doing it, then I should be cited. If I wasn't, then it shouldn't be that way. So I'm just voicing that I have a problem with that. What we can do about it, I'll leave that open to everybody else, but it's an issue for me.
I want to clarify something if I may, Mr. President.
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear, Cliff, we treat every customer equally. And you kind of implied that we may take an action against someone we don't like more than we do like.
No, you missed, you misunderstood me.
But I, I know, I don't think you meant that, but it could have been interpreted that way, so I wanted to make sure I clarified that me and my staff are directed to treat everybody the same. And if they don't, if they're selective, they're going to be in trouble. Um, but you're correct, your neighbor may not like you and then your neighbor may turn you into the DA.
Exactly.
Correct.
And I have no control over that.
Yes.
I would expect you to treat everybody with the same respect. And I, and I did not intend it to sound that way. However...
I didn't think so.
You have to react when somebody comes to you with a complaint.
So this, this is now the third year you're going to have this identical language and potentially in a resolution. It was last two years, this year. Last year, this board also adopted a penalty ordinance that was much, took a step further where you could, PID staff could have issued a water ticket. Um, my question is, has anybody ever been turned, turned into the DA or did we even write any water tickets?
Nope, just warnings.
So, I mean, the reason you put this in there is not because we're anxious to exercise this authority. It's because the state is still mandating certain things and part of the mandate is all these end-user things, which if you scroll up, it's, you know, don't water between these times, don't water within 48 hours of measurable rain.
It's to show our intent. Okay.
Yes, so you, you put that in there because the state really requires it, for lack of a better word.
Okay.
They don't do so as part...
Let me ask this question. Let's say that we didn't have that paragraph in our rules and we had somebody violating this and the neighbor turned them in, but they didn't come to us. They went down to the district attorney's office. What, what law do you think the district attorney is going to be reading? Is it...
They would go to the state water board.
Yes, and that's, that's, this is, comes from their law, right?
Right.
Okay, so the DA is going to have that anyhow.
Yeah, I agreed with that five minutes ago.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay, so... I move approval to adopt resolution 2016-13 establishing the PID Water Conservation Program for 2016.
Second. Any further discussion from the board? Not seeing any, I'm going to move to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to item eight C?
I think Dustin said it all.
Okay. Not seeing any, we're going to go forward. Roll call vote, Georgiana.
President Duncan?
Yes.
President Duncan?
Yes.
President Dickerson?
Yes.
President Kellogg?
No.
President Kellogg?
Yes, passes with a vote four to one, Director Kellogg being the no. Okay, commemoration, item eight D, commemoration of former board member, um, uh, to, for, forward board member, I'm sorry, Director Duncan, I read that wrong.
Right. It, uh, yeah, I just, uh, we did a commemorative bench for, um...
John?
John Hinke. And, uh, I think that Doug Fletcher, even though he was with us a short time, deserves some sort of recognition. And, uh, my first thought was a bench out by the garden, but then I found out that the garden is on the rental property, so therefore I don't think that's a good idea. So that, because you never know when that might not be ours. So I'd like it to be put somewhere else where, where it's close to agricultural things.
I was going to say, he also, he also liked the lake a lot, so we might have some bench opportunities up at the lake.
Well, I have a, uh, an, an opinion to put forth on this also. And it's not, you know, it's not a nice, warm, fuzzy opinion that is easy to go down and just follow along with this. But, um, John Hinke, I believe, was a member of the board for nine or 11 years or, long time.
Long time, I'm not sure how long.
Um, Doug is, was a member of the board for three years and two months or three years and three months, one of the two, I'm not sure which. Um, and while his presence on the board was appreciated, he told some really entertaining stories, uh, sometime to our detriment because that's what kept us here till midnight quite often. Um, I don't believe that his presence on the board was dramatic enough to warrant a resignation like we approved for John Hinke. And I know that, you know, that's, that's tough to be the guy who says no on something like this, but I, I just felt like instead of going along the easy route, I would make that statement and then the board will, the board will vote its, its, uh, choice and conscience if there is a, uh, a motion.
I'll make a motion that we do what Larry was talking about, uh, for Doug. I think, uh, he was a very good friend of mine for more than 40 years and I'm really missing him. And I think his time here was very worthwhile and he tried very hard to do the best he could for the board and for the district.
The motion, let's, let's...
Motion is what Larry said.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, now we can discuss it.
Okay.
Um, so are we, you want to do the exact same thing? Is that what you're saying that we did for John, which I believe was a bench?
Right, that's what I was thinking and finding the appropriate place to put it. He, I would rather it not be up the lake because I think he was more into agricultural things, but that would just be my preference.
We'll put it out in the cornfield then?
Right, our cornfield.
Yeah, I was going to say, because we have one of those here, so...
I have a suggestion, you might talk to his wife, Barbara, and get her opinion on it.
You know, this is sounding more and more like a gift of public funds to me.
Yeah, this is what, yeah.
We don't do something because he was a friend for 40 years. That is not right. It shouldn't have even come up in the conversation. And to talk to his wife about it, that is inappropriate, about where, where she would like it set. Maybe she'd like it set on her own property, on her front porch. You know, this, if, if we're going to be doing something like this, it should just be kept businesslike and, and that's it.
What did we do? Tell me a cost of what, what was John's, if I remember right, it was something like 1,100?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're 1,200, $1,500.
1,500 with the plaque.
Do we have any existing benches that have opportunities? Lake, wherever I...
Lots of opportunities at the lake.
Down here, so the only place I can think of that we would have benches at would be at the lake.
I think every lake bench is paid for by...
Has a, has a plaque on it. There's none that we put in.
I think so. Wow. Or was donated by Boy Scouts or has some history to it.
So there's no, Bill's shaking his head back there, so I, there's...
They were all put in.
Well, that's kind of what I thought, but I didn't know if there was some that we decided, hey, we're going to buy a bench and we, we, we set it in there and...
No, but there's plenty of space. So if you, if, if we wanted to go out and clear off a spot, a new bench could go in anywhere.
Yeah.
I just...
Just throw this out there, we could put a black plaque on one of the concrete benches at the, uh, concrete picnic tables. Those were purchased by the district. They would be seen a lot. Uh, you could put a more elaborate plaque and rather than a small plaque on a more expensive bench.
That's kind of what I was thinking, is do we have any, some kind of existing structure that we could put a placard on that would, you know? The, I'm all for...
There's no practical need for any benches somewhere else on our property? I said practical.
Well, I'm sure we could, yeah, I'm sure we could stick...
You're saying practical?
Yes.
Probably not. That was one of the benefits of this one, is a place for people to sit if they got here before we opened, et cetera.
What about, what, what do employees do on their breaks? Do they go outside?
Outside.
They stay inside, huh?
Yeah.
I'm surprised.
Well, and they have chairs they can carry outside if they wanted to sit outside, so that's...
Well, I'd like to say something. Um, we try to separate business from personal, but life is life and relationships are very important. And we can't discount the fact that, that, uh, Doug was a friend of, of Bill's for 40 years. Um, any more than, uh, if something were to happen to me and I'd only been here a year or two, I would hope that I had enough of an impact where you guys would want to, want to at least remember me, you know? And, and if not so much for Doug, because obviously he probably, you know, if you believe in the afterlife, he's smiling and if you don't, he doesn't really care anyway. But one way or the other, we are all still here. And as I said earlier, one of my biggest challenges and one of the reasons that I wanted to be on this board was to try and bring everybody together. And I think that a little gesture like that could go a long ways to having us work together instead of being separated and, uh...
I'd like to speak to this in a different perspective.
Go ahead.
When Doug was, uh, funeral, it was over 600 people there. They were from all over the community and so forth and I've talked to people that he did different things for and helped him with their lives worked. I've had a 4-H group come to Toastmasters on their own and make a, because he gave a fair speech each year and gave a great talks about how Doug Fletcher had helped him win their lives. And other men in the community that had been through the programs and women with Doug was the same place. So this guy did a lot of work for a lot of people, more so than any of us on this board, to his community all his life. He also, when they had the awards thing at the high school, these, this awards meeting was dedicated to Doug's pleasure. He's had all sorts of dedications in the community. And for us to sit here and debate on whether it's going to be $50 or $1,000, I, I just, you guys are going to light a candle that you're not going to like the results of. Just please do what Larry wants, get him a bench, you can figure out where to put it, and let's go on with the meeting.
Sounds to me like a gift of public fun. Sounds to me like a gift of public funds. We're, we're doing it because he was such a great guy for a lot of things he's done for the past forty or fifty years. This is not the, the, the way to make a decision on that.
I take it you don't want a bench, huh?
No. No.
I would like one.
Well, I can tell you something. Just as soon as this is done, I'm gonna bring up on the next, next agenda that we get a bench for our Guatemala guy. Rick Hall.
He didn't die.
I don't care. He served here for eleven years, twelve years. We should have a commemorative for him.
I know what happened to Hall, and I'm not gonna bring it up. This is for Doug Fletcher, this is thing. If you're so full of hate, why don't you just sit there and boil over? I would like to get it done and go on.
Bill, I think, I know, you, you just, you want to get through it and do it, but I think what we're asking ourselves here is, at what level do we want to do this? We are spending money. Now, I recall a lot of people having a huge problem with us celebrating our hundred-year anniversary for thirty-three hundred bucks, three thousand bucks?
No, three thousand.
Three thousand dollars?
I should go for a walk when you get done.
No, I'd like for you to please sit down, because we can't continue a meeting without you.
This is emotional for me. I'm sorry, I don't want to sit in here and listen to him. I'm gonna say something I'll regret. Now-
Go ahead.
And I'll be back. You tell me when you're done, then I'll come back.
Okay, so since Director Kellogg has left this meeting, I am just going to table this at this point, and we will see it on a future agenda. We're gonna move, we're gonna move it to-
You can't, there's the motion.
I can't?
Motion's on the table.
Motion's on the table.
Motion's on the table.
Okay, then I guess we're going through with, so the motion was, we're back to me again.
Ask for public input.
Yeah, I, I just want to hear the motion again real quick, so as I listen.
It's to do anything that Larry wants, it sounded like.
Yeah, I get the decision.
A memorial bench? Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this at this point? Barry?
Troublemaker.
So much for being a peacemaker, Cliff. I'm not done yet. I don't agree with Ken, and he knows that. I don't necessarily agree with Bill either, but I do agree with Larry, and I do agree with George. I think something should be done. It doesn't have to be something elaborate, it doesn't have to cost twelve hundred dollars or anything like that. On you made the suggestion, why don't you put a plaque on one of the cement benches, you know, or cement tables, something like that. I think that would be in order. But, uh, you know, you got, you guys gotta just, you gotta put the gun away, Ken, just, just relax, you know? Don't get too excited here.
Yeah, I want to amend my, uh, Bill's motion to state that it, not, not a bench, but let staff come up with some suggestions.
A memorial placard?
Excuse me, I, I, excuse me, I didn't have my five minutes yet, Larry.
You talked me into it, Barry.
Anyway, what I'm saying is that something should be done. You guys figure out what it should be. And, you know, let's get rid of this animosity, and I'm glad you're at that end and he's at that end, because it's a long way to throw arrows, you know?
That's not, that's not a design flaw, but-
When they get out of line, you got that big thing in your hand there, that gaveling. If it doesn't work on that thing, then wrap it on their heads.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Barry.
I got a flat spot back here from that.
To my amendment?
Yeah, I'm gonna second it. So a memorial placard, right, is basically an amendment?
That's staff's recommendation, yeah.
Okay, instead of a memorial bench?
Right.
Okay. All right, um, any other comment from the public? Not seeing any, I'm gonna close the public's portion of this. Back to the directors that are left. Any other comment?
Well, with a, with a lower-priced ticket item like this, I don't have nearly the problem that I had with it. Uh, after all, I think that we did give Rick Hall a plaque to carry away as a memento for his service here, didn't we?
We gave him a framed resolution.
Yes, something like that, yeah.
My question is, how much the plaque that goes on the bench, how much do you think?
Two hundred.
Yeah, that's kind of what the number I had. The bench itself, the bench itself is a thousand bucks.
Oh, I did.
Bench itself, I would estimate about a thousand bucks.
It's gonna cost at least-
It'll be two, it'll be two hundred.
Depends, you know, it could be higher.
Just let us figure out.
Yeah, let them figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, you may find a memorial tree with a small little plaque next to it or something.
There we go.
I think Doug would really like that.
Okay, let's go ahead, let's go ahead, and, uh, anybody else for the comments? Okay.
So that's an amendment, right?
All in favor to the amendment, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? All in favor of the original motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four. I guess it's zero.
Will be noted as absent.
Absent, okay.
We passed it without you.
Four with one absentee. Director Kellogg. That was more painful than I thought it was gonna be. Okay. Number ten, uh, anybody interested in taking a board recess? Do we need a board recess, anybody?
We have twenty-seven minutes on the clock.
Okay. We are gonna take a board recess for five minutes.
Can we finish this in twenty-seven minutes?
I would think so, because I got, I see basically five items, and if we can't get through it-
There's another closed session.
Oh, we have another closed session at the very back there, huh?
That might take a few minutes, not a ton.
Yeah, I don't think we have time for a break, myself. I'd like to get this done.
If everybody's good?
So we can all go home.
We're good.
Let's keep going.
Committee reports, board oral reports regarding the representation of commissions committees. But, uh, Butlafco, Director Duncan.
Okay, we met on the last thir-, the first Thursday of the month, and we approved the budget for sixteen seventeen, and that's basically all we did.
Thank you, Larry. Water Conservation Committee Directors, Larry Duncan and Bill Kellogg. Phil.
Uh, we visited about our meeting down in, at Patrick Ranch.
That was last month.
We, we talked, we had a report.
Oh, you went again?
Hey, we had a report on it.
Director, Director Kellogg, just please continue.
What manners. Anyway, we talked about the tour, we had a Patrick Ranch, and talked about that. Then we went on an outside walk-around with Jim Ladrini, who was showing us all the plannings of taking care outside and how they're put in and so forth, and he was asked questions by board members and others. And in the walk-around, we saw some of the property hasn't been cared for properly, which I've mentioned tonight, but I'm not gonna say where. And we looked at the garden and thought maybe we'd have the plans for either vegetable garden or a garden showing perennial plants that were drought resistant and possibly deer resistant. Now, after the board made the decision not to put the property on the market, we will go ahead and figure out which one that they would like to do. Minutes that I have about the meeting does not talk about using the garden two different ways. It just says vegetable garden, and that's not exactly what we're aiming at. We're talking about changing it to more perennial plants and using it as an effect. We also talked about the landscaping down here and around that isn't maintained, it's in poor shape. It looks terrible, and that the Water Conservation Committee might be able to take that over and improve upon the care of it that now exists. And the meeting was good, George was there, Jim was there and took good notes, and I think you took the pictures, Jim? And that are in the write-up, so it was a good meeting, it was positive, and the board, I was, and George is backing us to continue the Water Conservation Committee, which I didn't know about, and I was very relieved here when we had our meeting, and George said we should continue with the work we've been doing. So that's what I can remember without looking at notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kellogg. Is there any questions from the board on those two committee reports? Not seeing any, I'm gonna go to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions on that? Not seeing any, we're gonna close the public portion of that. We're gonna move on, and thank you both, we're gonna move on to the General Manager's report.
Yeah, you have my written report. Um, probably the one thing I want to point out, most importantly, is we had Project Wet with fourth graders today, and we have it again tomorrow. We touch every fourth grader at, um, Ponderosa and Paradise Elementary and some of the charter schools. My kudos and thanks to staff, Christie, Jim and his crew, all those involved. They put a great effort out for these kids, a lot of patience, showing them the treatment plan, having events at the schools. They do a fantastic job. I really appreciate it, and I want to give them kudos for that.
All right, where were we at today? Tomorrow, Ponderosa? Okay. So I'm glad I signed the field trip report for my fourth grader, so, yeah.
Update on how many people have signed up for the care program?
Oh, that's a good question. It's about a couple hundred, about two hundred.
I thought you told me four hundred the other day.
Well, that was my, that's what-
I remember numbers.
First impression was, yeah, you do, and then I checked with Laura, and she said no.
We had room, we had room for fifteen hundred and twenty-eight or something like that?
So there's still room for people to sign up for the care program.
Good. Looks like there's a lot of room. I expected there to be people, there'd be two hundred that didn't get signed up at this point.
And I appreciate staff on that one, it was a good, we had it set up, so we had a table out here on the opening day. Had a, quite a few, quite a big crowd, um, but rolled through those hundred and ninety-some initial ones. In about an hour, hour and a half, um, got a good report that it went smooth, and it's going good.
Maybe they oughta go to work for TSA, huh?
No chuckles from the back there. Um, okay.
Gotta make a light, light.
Does anybody have any questions? Any of the directors have any questions for George on the report?
I wanted to comment about budget process.
Oh, good, good, I'm glad you brought that up.
The Finance Committee will be reviewing the draft budget and the draft reserving policy this week. After receiving their input, I plan on having two customer workshops in these documents. My question is, shouldn't you have board approval of the budget before having workshops on the budget?
No, we're trying to get public input into the budget process, so we want them to see it while it's still draft, so they can give you their input before you approve it.
Oh, okay. You could always put some public, public members on the committee to-
Well, we're gonna let them have input.
Okay.
Well, and again, the special board meeting in June will not be to approve the budget. It will be to discuss the budget, get your input on the budget, get more public input on the budget. One of the things the public said is they don't know what's going on, so we're not gonna have a budget that shows up in July and boom, you approve it. We're gonna roll it out, we're gonna get input, we want people to get involved if they want to get involved.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
We just, we had a, at the Lafco, we had no comments on our budget. There was no input, no public input or nothing. Unfortunately, I think that's gonna happen here.
It may, but nobody's gonna say we didn't try to get their involvement.
Right. Oh, no, they'll say that.
I, I have a question. I don't know if this is, uh, appropriate at this point in time, but we were talking about the, uh, the process of having to put in the new recycling system, and, uh, that's obviously got its own budget. Should that be a temporary committee to keep the general public appraised of where we're at with that project so that they understand more fully what's involved in it and where their money is being spent? I, I'm just throwing that out there.
Community relations.
Yeah. I expect they already covering that.
Yeah, we've been working it through the CR committee. We also did, um, thanks to Jim's and Mickey's effort, we did a whole rollout change on the, um, on our webpage. So there's a section on the Process Water Recycle Project that goes through the timeline. It's got active links to all the documents that were brought forward and through, and that, that was a new item that, uh, it was job well done.
Okay, any other comments or questions for George on the manager's report? Not seeing anybody from the public have any questions or comments?
They'll be in June. I'm gonna have one in the morning and one at the same night. So it's available to everybody, but I'm gonna do them all on the same day.
Anybody else in the public want a comment or a question? Not seeing any, I'm gonna close the public portion of that. Uh, it was an information item only, so thank you, George, for that. We're gonna move on to number twelve, the legal report.
Okay, I am working on, uh, the opinion about, to present options to change your voting methodology, or at least propose a change. Uh, I think that will be, uh, available in time for your June meeting, so you can consider the, your options and consider taking action there. Just a couple other quick items. I'm working with staff on, uh, it's called SB eighty-eight. It's actually a trailer budget bill from the last, uh, last year that requires, uh, very onerous measurement requirements, and when you're a, uh, this is getting into the weeds a little bit, but with a reservoir, it's very difficult to take measurements on an hourly basis, which is what PID would be required to do. You can calculate a measurement, but you can't actually have a meter that spits out a number. Um, there's a little bit of flexibility in the law and the regulations that accompany the law that, where you can kind of plead for, for mercy, so to speak. So in, in any event, I just wanted to let you know we're working on that at the staff level, and, um, it may be something that has to come to the board at some future date. I wanted to comment again on water conservation. The, uh, the state has made it clear that, you know, the latest emergency regs go through, I think, January of twenty seventeen, that they're wanting to transition into more permanent regulations.
Of course they do.
And, um, that, you know, that, depending on what the proposal is, uh, it could be problematic to, to someone with senior water rights, like PID. So it's something that, you know, I'm watching closely, I know staff's watching it as well. Aqua, uh, you know, of what you're a member, they're actively engaged in that issue, so that'll be another item that will likely, uh, come before you at a future date. Lastly, Ken, I thought you were gonna catch me, but you didn't.
I've got it, you just haven't let me talk yet.
Oh.
Want me to ask you, is what my, show you my question?
Yeah.
iPad page six-
Let's see if we're talking about the same thing.
Okay, iPad page sixty-three, paragraph four. There is a sentence I can't understand that says-
I'm pretty sure George tipped you up.
I did not.
No.
I did not. I actually told him you didn't think he would catch it.
It says, okay, so that's it. As proposed, the fee would not be more tied to per connection.
Okay, keep scrolling. I'm, I'm gonna pass the buck here. One, two, we'll keep going. Okay. Who signed that letter? No, it, you, you caught me. There's a typo in my letter. I strive to have no typos, but you caught me. So let it be known in the minutes, Georgiana, Destin is not personal. Okay, good. Audio, audio recording. We were placing bets whether you were gonna catch that or not.
Me darn, well, I actually have some questions, too.
Okay, shoot.
Okay, on your report, um, after the typo, the page sixty-four, that item five C, top of page sixty-four.
Yes.
That, are, are you indicating that we might be able to do that in reverse, from what they're doing there?
I don't know if you remember, but last meeting I mentioned there's a pending bill that goes that direction.
Right, right, yeah.
You may request an amendment to basically free it, free the language up, or you can go either way.
Oh, okay, so-
That was the bill I was referring to.
Still something that's cooking there.
Yeah, but there, there's been a, an amendment to that, and you'll see it, um, towards the end of the paragraph, that there has to be a resolution with a declaration that the change is being made in the furtherance of the California Voting Rights Act.
Right, right.
I think that amendment precludes the amendment we'd like to see, or you'd like to see, that would allow it, you to go from division to a purely at-large.
Because that, that may not be based upon the California Order Rights Act.
The folks that are, um, pursuing this bill would say that's in furtherance of the California Voting Rights Act.
Okay, okay, so probably not, then. Uh, page sixty-five, paragraph J. It, it's talking about this Senate Bill fourteen thirty-six, blah, blah, blah. Oral report of final action recommendation- It, it's talking about this Senate Bill fourteen thirty-six, blah, 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 Oral Report of Final Action Recommendations. And it says, so this is a new law somebody's proposing. It says, "This bill would require final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid of a local agency executive to be made in a separate discussion item, not on the consent calendar." Aqua adopted a watch position. But we changed over a long time ago, cause you told us that we needed to be out in open session because of the Brown Act. And here they're, they're wanting to make it to where you can't put it in a consent item.
Yes, slightly different.
So some people tried to bury it in a consent item, maybe.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, well, we're already there.
Yes.
We're transparent as you can be on that. Oh, this. We have to keep records of all these votes? Did you know that, know that? Did we keep records of all those two eighteen ballots?
That's only a proposal.
Oh, oh, we gotta talk to Gallagher. Only if what? Well, it's the one on page sixty-six. Uh, "The bill would require local agencies to keep Proposition two eighteen protests securely stored and sealed in the public hearing and then require them to maintain the protest for a period not less than two years."
We, we do that anyways.
Do we have all those good, you did?
And that's, again, my advice.
Good job, Dustin.
The securely stored and sealed gives me a little bit of heartburn. You know, we may, um, the next time you go through a Proposition two eighteen process, you may at the outset say, "We want to retain somebody to handle the ballots, you know, two days before the hearing, get them organized, you know, open them up, get them organized, pre-count them."
Instead of doing it there?
Instead of doing it at the hearing.
I asked George to get Candace Grubbs' office to do it. They wouldn't do it, even if we paid them.
So if, if Jim's bill went through, then that would, we wouldn't be able to do that. So I, I, I actually talked to his office and suggested maybe they drop that.
And I will as well.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't, I actually, if you're interested in these letters, by the way, there's about ten of these letters. I don't know why this one made the cut, George, but, um, there's, I'm part of Aqua's State Ledge Committee, so we, we review every water-related bill, every, you know, government-related, government-agency-related bill, special district bill, and we take positions on them and then direct Aqua's lobbyists. So we meet about ten times, uh, a session. I happen to have a meeting this Friday. So these are letters, update letters I do, following this format after every committee meeting. So if you're interested in seeing them.
I think it's interesting you give us a synopsis like this. Uh, that's nice to see what's going on there. I, I do have a follow-up, another question on iPad page sixty-nine. This is numbered weirdly, but it's one of your legal pages in there. Uh, every line is numbered, so you might as well just go to line thirty-one through thirty-six. Uh, you know, item three B and item three C. I need you to tell me what's the difference between those two. They got me confused.
Okay, um, remember, Proposition two eighteen is a two-step process, um, when you're talking about fees. When normally the two-step is step one is the majority protest. So you hold a public hearing, you determine whether you have a majority protest.
That's three B.
So that's B.
Yes.
It's only one vote, uh, one written protest per parcel. The second step is if, if you do not have a majority protest, in some cases you have to go then to a majority vote.
In some cases?
In some cases.
What, what kind of case?
There's an exception.
Not S, huh?
So for a water agency for, which is PID, we don't have to go to that second step.
Okay.
If you're a stormwater agency, if, if PID wanted to have a stormwater fee, there's a view that, yeah, we don't, but, um, let's say we did. We would have to go through that two-step as the law exists today, so.
Well, that is crazy. So the first one says, yes, I don't want this increase, and the second one says, no, I don't want this increase.
The second one is a majority vote. So it's two different standards.
So if you didn't want the increase in either situation, first you vote, yes, I don't want it, and then you vote, no, I, uh, I, I don't want it.
Depends on how it's phrased in the ballot, but yeah, potentially.
Somebody spent too much time in a closet there with that stuff.
Howard Jarvis.
Okay, uh, oh, goodness gracious, there's lots of stuff on the next page.
So just a little background, uh, Bill, you may find this interesting. This, remember, I've been reporting that Aqua is proposing a constitutional amendment to relax some of the, you know, rough edges of Proposition two eighteen. This would be a statute to, to accomplish a, a change to the Constitution, which you can't do. And I mentioned that in my letter, that I, I'm not in favor of this. I, I like the goal, I agree. Proposition two eighteen needs some reform, but you can't do it through a statute. You're just, you're inviting lawsuits that would probably prevail. So, sorry, you're, you had other questions?
Yeah, well, it, it's the last page, page of seventy, Amendment three, which is B one, two, three, and then C. This is where they put the language in to allow us to put in a, a disincentive for people to consume a lot of water. Or an incentive for them not to consume a lot of water. They're, they're trying to make it legal that we can put in something. We got our base rate that'll cover our cost. And then as long, we can have a punitive rate for water wasters, but the, the deal is we gotta take this money and use it to either save it for future, uh, uh, water-related expenses or to reduce the rates you have.
Right, there's, so the stated law right now is anything PID could do is either a tax or a fee. There's, there's no third category. What they're trying to create is a third category known as a regulatory.
Regulatory fee.
Which is basically a penalty.
Right.
Again, I have significant doubt whether this would pass judicial scrutiny. You'd, you'd much rather see this language in the Constitution, because a statute cannot amend the Constitution and Proposition two eighteen is housed in the Constitution. So, but that's what they're trying to do. You've, you've.
Yeah, I liked it.
It violates two eighteen, period.
Pardon me?
It violates, it violates.
And, and a consti, a later constitutional initiative can amend two eighteen, that's fine. But you can't have a statute that amends the Constitution.
Well, that'll never go, that, that won't float the boat then.
No, I, I mean, the, the California Water Founda, Foundation is trying to, to find an author for this language. I don't know the latest if they're, if they've succeeded or not, but Aqua is telling them, and I support Aqua, to not waste your time. If this were to pass, my advice to PID is don't utilize this procedure. Even though the statute says you can do these things, let's not do that, because.
We'll have to undo it later on.
We're just gonna be sued.
Yeah.
And, and I think our likelihood of success is pretty remote.
Okay, I got through your report. Thank you, I liked all that stuff.
Thank you for pointing out my typo. Appreciate that.
Can we just put that back up on the screen one more time and make sure we see it? No. Maybe get the laser pointer out and circle it a couple times. Okay, anybody else have any questions on or comments on the legal report, directors?
I think Mr. Hunt covered it all.
Anybody from the public like to speak to or have questions on the legal report? Not seeing any, we're gonna close the public portion of it. Information item only, we're gonna move on to staff and billing reports.
I would say we table those and table the treasures and ta, table the director's comments.
Anything super important on the treasures report that we need to know about this month? Well, then, I don't think we need to table it.
Going to Toronto?
We're just, we're just gonna say the treasures report's done. I'm not actually gonna move it to old business, cause if you didn't read it, then.
I move we accept the treasures report as presented.
I'll second. As not presented.
Was presented there.
As presented, as read.
As written.
As written, okay. I'll second.
I read it.
All in favor?
You read it.
You read it.
All in favor of the treasures report?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. No?
No.
Did you have a comment on it?
Yeah, we had a director who talked for fifteen minutes and he used up all our time, so we couldn't review it.
Next time, you shouldn't talk so long, Bill.
Okay, thank you, both. Um, Director Kellogg, passes four one, Director Kellogg being the no vote. Okay, staff and billing reports. Uh, we have to do some action on that. We're gonna table that, yeah. I didn't know if anybody caught that. We tabled that. Okay, fifteen, directors' comments. Go. Director Kellogg.
I've said enough tonight. I don't, not anymore.
Director Jacobson. No comment. Director Duncan.
No comment.
Director Hunt.
I've only got about fifteen minutes worth, but I will pass and say no comments.
We've only got two minutes.
Okay, my comment is I find it, uh, in, I know I expanded on the one item up there on, uh, item eight B. But I find it highly disturbing that there is a group of people in Paradise that seem to have free will to just say whatever they want and pass along whatever paperwork they want, true or false, stand out in front of businesses. Ask the person on the recall if they'd like to sign the petition, because they have no idea who he is, cause they've never actually been to a meeting or done anything with the PID. Someone just told them they need to stand out there with a clipboard. So, uh, I would ask the people of Paradise become a little more informed prior to signing a recall notice. Cause apparently even the people that are presenting the recall notice don't actually know what's going on in the PID. Or just have a, um, desire to pass along the wrong information. And that's my comment.
We're gonna go into closed session, real property negotiations. We'll be back in a few minutes.
Public comments?
Any public comments?
We, we actually need a motion to exceed the three and a half hour limit.
Oh, cause we just hit nine fifty-nine.
We haven't exceeded it yet, though.
But we're going to go into closed session and exceed it.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion so that we can continue this meeting and take care of item sixteen, seventeen, and I guess eighteen.
I move we continue the meeting after our regular scheduled, uh, closing time to address items sixteen and seventeen and eighteen and nineteen.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There I am again.
Passes, passes four to one, Director Kellogg being the no vote. Okay, we're gonna move into closed session, item number sixteen, real property negotiations. Are you ready? Jan, ready? Came back out of closed session. We gave instruction to General Manager on, uh, real property negotiations, uh, with Sarah Pacific Industries. That's that, and I am now going to adjourn this meeting at ten twenty-four PM.
We voted, uh, yes.